Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this February 22nd, 2021, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. Thanks for joining us this evening. If you would join us as we do at the start of each of our meetings in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please, rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the roll. I know that Councilmember Carter is trying to fight her way through some technical difficulties, but if you could please call the roll, we'll join, have her join us when she gets here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Loman?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussey?
Present. Six members of the Bloomington City Council are present, and as I said, I know that Councilmember Carter's trying to get on, and it's just a matter of fight her way through the technology issues. With that, we can move on with our agenda. And item three on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Also, do we have any changes or any additions or subtractions to this evening's agenda? I see Mr. Verugui with his hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, for a good evening. For item 7.1, the Rules of Procedure for the City Council, I would request that we table this item to a meeting in March. And if that's acceptable to council, we'll figure out tomorrow morning which meeting that's going to be on. And we had, we had promised the council we'd give you a little bit more time to review the rules than we gave you in the packet, so I don't have any concern in delaying this item for a couple of weeks. And then we'll be better equipped to answer questions at this time that you may have after reviewing them. So if that's okay with the council to hold 7.1, Mr. Mayor. Or to remove it from the agenda for tonight.
To remove it from the agenda tonight, and we'll find time again in the near future. Councilmember Nelson?
I didn't have a comment on that. I had a comment on another item, if that's all right, Mayor.
Please.
Will item 8.1, the Transportation Safety Improvements, allow for any public input tonight? I know when we had moved those, there was going to be public input at that time, but it was moved back. So I'm just wondering what that process is and if that changes anything on the agenda.
I think that was the plan, Councilmember Nelson. I think not officially calling it a public hearing, but actually public input. We're going to take public comment on that and public input on that topic, yes.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Council, any additional changes or reactions to this evening's agenda? If not, first, I'd like to acknowledge that Councilmember Carter has joined us, and so we have a full seven-member city council at this time. And if there's no other changes, I would move approval of our amended agenda, removing item 7.1, the Resolution on the Council Rules of Procedure Amendments, until a date to be determined in the future.
Second, Councilmember Loman.
We've got a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as amended. There are no further comments or questions. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. So we've got an agenda for this evening's meeting, and we can move on in that agenda. So item four on our agenda, which is the public comment period, and item 4.1, which is a response to prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verugui?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We did not have anybody address the council on February 8th, therefore, no follow-up this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that will bring us into item 4.2, the Public Comment Period, which is a 20-minute period at the start of each council meeting, where we allow members of the community to address the council on items not on the agenda for up to five minutes. And as I've said in the past, the, the public comment period is set up in such a way that it allows us to take the comments in, but not necessarily respond. We, we wait until the next meeting when we have an opportunity to prepare an answer and make sure that we have the correct information responding to citizen concerns or resident complaints or any comments that the residents might make. And so we won't be responding this evening other than corrections of facts or, or answering specific questions as, you know, when, when is the, when is summer fed this year? That kind of thing. So we will be limiting everyone to five minutes, just to make sure it's fair to everyone. And we will start our 20-minute period now. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line wishing to speak at public comment period?
Leah, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Loud and clear.
Great. Do we have any callers that wish to speak to the City Council on Agenda Item 4.2, the Public Comment Period?
Anyone who wants to speak on that agenda, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And we have David Glick who wants to speak. Sure, your line is open.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
If you could please repeat your name for the record and, and then please go ahead.
Sure, it's David Clark, Bloomington resident. Good evening, Mayor Bussey, city staff, and city council members. I'm calling tonight to address a number of concerns that I have and have also heard from other Bloomington residents about. In reviewing the packet for tonight's meeting, I once again see a recurring theme from residents' emails about the city not listening to concerns and paying lip service to public input in order to meet a construction deadline. I am encouraged to hear that there's going to be a public comment timed tonight specifically for that. Now, this is specifically regarding spot improvements to 106th and Decatur Avenue, starting on page 146 of tonight's packet. And this does not even involve a zoning change, which is what occurred two blocks from my house with the 86th and Penn condo development. In that instance, a change was made to the zoning ordinance to accommodate a higher density proposal from a developer, despite over 600 residents signing a petition against that development. Notices regarding the demolition of the house on that property were only given to residents in a 500-foot radius, or about 25 residences out of hundreds that would be impacted by a zoning change. Mr. Mayor and city council members, our zoning ordinances are the firewall that we as residents have against an overly zealous city council who will be long gone from public office while we are still living here, having to deal with the consequences of your decisions. Zoning changes are put in place for a reason and should be very difficult to change, and only with an overwhelming support from the community. The City Council has an established track record of ignoring public sentiment from the 86th and Penn project to the Verizon expansion on Old Shakopee Road, to the spot improvements on 106th and Decatur in tonight's agenda. And there are many more instances that time will not permit me to cite. So tonight, I'm calling on the mayor, Mayor Bussey, and city council to rescind the zoning change on 86th and 10th, re-engage the community, and find a workable solution to what is a challenging property, that is a challenging space there. The way this has been handled is unacceptable, and I would like to have this start over in a better way. I invite any of you to go walk that area with me. I'm only two blocks away, and I'll talk with some residents and get a feel for how this would impact that area. I'll, I'll follow up to this call by sending each of you an email with my contact info, and we'll wait for you to contact me so we can go walk that area together and have a conversation, something that I don't believe happened the first time around. I look forward to hearing from you so we can together find a workable solution to 86th and 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thanks for your call this evening.
Leah, do we have any other callers that wish to speak on Agenda Item 4.2, the Public Comment Period?
No other caller as of the moment. Please continue.
Thank you.
We have no other callers on the line for our public comment period. So with that, council, I will close the public comment period for this evening. Thanks to Mr. Clark for his phone call and calling in. And we will move on in our agenda. We'll move on to item five, our introductory items, and item 5.1, which is a, a report for, from Creative Minnesota, a study on Bloomington, Minnesota specifically. And Leah Hughes, our manager for the Bloomington Center for the Arts, is going to kick us off on this, and I know that there's others as well on the presentation. And I believe Leah is almost there. Good evening, Leah. Are you with us?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Bussey. Thank you, Senator, City Manager Verugui and city council members. It is my pleasure to introduce Sheila Smith, who will be our presenter for tonight. Sheila Smith is the Executive Director of the Minnesota Citizens for the Arts, also known as MCA, which is an organization that strengthens our cultural community by achieving arts-friendly policy at the Minnesota Legislature and in Congress. Now, also Chair of the Creative Minnesota Project, she produces important research about the arts and culture communities for education, policymaking, and art advocacy. She's a well-known leader in the nonprofit sector. Smith has been a member of the Executive Committee and Public Policy Cabinet of the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits. She led the arts community into the successful 2008 statewide legacy ballot campaign, which created 25 years of dedicated funding for the arts and environment through a Minnesota state constitutional amendment. She also served on the Board of the 2012 Minnesota United Campaign, protecting the rights of all Minnesotans to marry, and served as staff in the Minnesota Senate. As a national expert in arts advocacy, Smith has been a featured speaker at conferences and events around the country, including Grantmakers in the Arts, Americans for the Arts, and the Rural Arts Summit, and has won several national awards for her work, including the Eileen Valcanis Award for Americans for the Arts and the Cindy R. Yates Award for the Association of Performing Arts Presenters. She is the former Chair of the State Arts Action League, part of the Americans for the Arts. With over 25 years of experience about the intersection of art and politics, she teaches at the University of Minnesota and has a Master's in Arts Administration from St. Mary's University and a BA in Shakespeare from St. Olaf College. And on a side note, she's also an avid kayaker, a vernacular architect, a carver, and a painter. So I please let me introduce Sheila Smith.
Good evening, Ms. Smith. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the important arts and culture sector in Bloomington. It's been a pleasure to work with Alexandra, Leah, and thank you to Chris Wilson for setting up tonight. We have a lot of information to partake, to give you this, this evening. And so I think what I'll do is launch into the presentation first, and then we will talk about themes and then do a little Q and A at the end, if that's okay with you. Minnesota Citizens for the Arts is a statewide arts advocacy organization. We've been around since the 70s. We started in about eight years ago with all of the statewide arts service organizations, such as Springboard for the Arts and the Minnesota Theater Alliance, and art-supporting foundations such as the McKnight Foundation, Bush Foundation, Jerome, Mardag, and Target, to, to find hard data about the art, nonprofit arts and culture sector in Minnesota, because we were all needing it for the same things, for policymaking, for education, for decision-making, and for advocacy. So we banded together to do the Creative Minnesota Project, which now has produced three large statewide and 11 regional studies in 2015, 2017, and 2019. And in the intervening years, we have been doing local studies now for eight or nine years, based on the larger studies. And so the Bloomington Study was part of the last large cohort, which was interrupted by the COVID situation. I should note that the numbers we're going to be talking about were, was the community previous to the impact of COVID, and what I would hope the community would then get back to after COVID restrictions are eased. The, um, let's, let's look at the numbers, and then I'll talk about the big picture. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Um, at this point, I think we've done over 60 local Creative Minnesota studies, so you are one of many, but you are also one of the largest studies that we have done so far in the, in terms of the economic impact of your community. In 2019, we put out the large Creative Minnesota Study that was statewide, and we found that the arts economy in Minnesota had been continuing to grow. And some of these slides will show the growth of various parts of the sector, just as context for your figures. So the Minnesota nonprofit arts and culture organizations in Minnesota, in total, there's 1,903. In the last study, we found over 300 more that we had not yet included in previous studies. For some reason, I can't make this advance. Why is that? There we go. On a statewide basis, we found over 23 million people attend nonprofit arts and culture events on an annual basis in the state of Minnesota, and that, too, was an increase from the previous study of over a million attendees. So we found that, on average, Minnesota adults attend nonprofit arts and culture events about four times a year, and we were glad to see that students, on average, attend nonprofit arts and culture events about six times per year. Minnesotans, on, on the whole, attend arts and culture events more often than other Americans. We found that 74% of Minnesotans in public opinion surveys will say that they attend nonprofit arts and culture events, whereas only 54% of all Americans would answer the same. Um, what's interesting, and I think probably very, most useful for you guys, is that on a statewide basis, we found that non-locals spend 80% more in town when attending an arts and culture event. And I know that artistry, for example, for some reason, this is on automatic advance. I apologize. I can't make it stop doing that, so I'm just going to talk over it. So a local person coming to an arts event, they might go out to dinner, spend a little gas in town. They would spend, on average, $17.83 per person, per event, not including the cost of the ticket, whereas a non-local would spend, on average, $32.15. That is, they may also be spending money in hotels. Maybe they're shopping in town while they're waiting for the show to start. So it's advantageous for a community to think about arts and culture events as a way to attract people to the community to spend money in your local stores, restaurants, and bars. As a whole, on a statewide basis, we found the economic impact of the arts and culture sector was over $2 billion annually in Minnesota. That's an increase of 170 million over the two-year previous study. And this tells us that Minnesota is the epicenter of arts and culture in the Midwest, because our nonprofit arts and culture economy is more than twice as large as that of Wisconsin, 10 times larger than Nebraska, and 12 times larger than North and South Dakota. So if you're a young creative person, you're probably packing up your car and moving to Minnesota looking for a job, whether that's a graphic designer, photographer, dancer, singer, actor, et cetera. And I think that's very good for our economy, that we're creating, we're attracting young creative people who will start small businesses and contribute to our economy in the future. In Bloomington, the total spent in the community by Bloomington's arts and culture organizations is $4.3 million annually. That's quite a lot in one community of your size. Arts and cultural attendees in Bloomington are nearly 300,000 annually, 282,560 people. The economic impact of the attendees, looking back at that per-person spending calculation, turns out to be just short of $8 million annually, at $7.8 million. That's an, on average, amount of $27.58 spent per person. It's still advancing. I apologize. And it's also freezing now, too. Okay. Um, so, um, so your total for just the attendees is $7.8 million. Shifting perspective a little bit, in the state of Minnesota, there's over 108,000 artists and creative workers. We found an increase of 4,600 plus over the previous study, so that was also in a growth pattern. Who are we talking about when we're talking about creative workers? We have selected 41 different jobs in the community, from musicians and singers to photographers, audio and video equipment technicians, architects, craft artists, floral designers, you name it. People who use creative skills in their, in their jobs. We found that artists and creative workers are in every corner of the state without exception. People tend to think that the arts and culture is a metro thing. It is not a metro thing. There are artists in every corner of the state contributing to their communities, as there are nonprofit arts and culture organizations in every corner of the state. In Hennepin County, you are in the epicenter of the artist and creative worker class. So we found over 16,000 full-time artists and creative workers in just Hennepin County, with over 25,000 part-time workers in Hennepin County, for a total of 41,500 artists and creative workers just in your county. So that's an asset for you as a community to think about. How do you attract artists and creative workers to live and work in Bloomington and contribute to your creative economy, I think would be a fruitful conversation. The arts and culture sector in Bloomington supports the following number of jobs in the surrounding community, just short of 300 jobs are dependent upon nonprofit arts and culture. Arts and culture in Bloomington also generates state and local government revenue of just short of $900,000 annually. So in total, the arts and culture sector in Bloomington, the economic impact of the organizations at 4.3 million, the audiences at 7.8 million, brings you a total of $12 million annually in economic impact from the arts and culture just in the city of Bloomington. And here's a slide that shows all of the many partners that help produce these facts and figures for the community, as I said before, including the McKnight Foundation, Bush Foundation, Jerome Foundation, Minnesota State Arts Board and Regional Arts Councils, the Mardag Foundation, Target, the University of Minnesota, and more and more. So let me switch modes here. Okay, there we go. So there were a couple of things about the arts and culture sector in Bloomington that we wanted to highlight. One is that people think of the arts and culture as a, as a St. Paul, Minneapolis thing. So, and here you are located essentially between these two giant cultural centers that do draw a lot of attention. But with $12 million in economic impact from the arts and culture, that's, that's extraordinary, fostering nearly 300 full-time equivalent jobs and nearly $900,000 in government revenue just in your city is quite a lot. You're drawing nearly 300,000 people to arts events on an annual basis. And I have to say that artistry really is the big kahuna in the arts community of Bloomington. It's about half of the economic impact in terms of the spending of the arts organizations, and it's about a third of the attendees, the total attendees. But then two-thirds of the attendees are attending events with all of the other 24 organizations in the community. So you have a nice mix of a really flagship institution, but also lots of other different kinds of organizations. There are 10 performing arts organizations, which is nearly half of the sector. That's common with all of the other studies that we've done, that most, the most organizations are performing arts. But you also have three museums, which is actually very unusual. Most cities don't have a museum, and you have three. So that might be something to think about promoting for your community. And then with Hennepin County being the, you know, the, the center of individual artists and creative workers, there's a constant need for creative workspaces. Cities like yours have been working with art space to create artist live workspaces. For example, Hopkins has been working on that. Hastings has already built one on a piece of land that had been vacant for 25 or 25 years, I think. It was quite a long time that it was vacant. So now, all of a sudden, they have artists living and working right in areas that previously didn't have a lot of activity, and they are, they're going to spark a lot of other interesting things in town. Um, let's see. Those are kind of the highlights. Oh, that you also serve over 10,000 students at arts and culture events is really great, that the nonprofit arts and culture organizations are serving the community so strongly through serving students, I think is another highlight. So, um, part of your materials should have been a copy of the PowerPoint and also a one-pager and a press release that describe the overall findings of the study. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Appreciate it, and appreciate the information and the data collection and the, the facts and the, the resources behind this. You mentioned the one-pager, and it says here, in the one-pager, we have 25 arts organizations, 10 with spending budgets under $25,000 that drive $12.1 million in economic impact for the city. that drive twelve-point-one million dollars in economic impact for the city. I mean, that's, that's absurd. That's, that's, that's a lot of money. And, I mean, it, it's not a competition at all. But how, what does that put us on par with? What, how does that compare us with other cities that you know, the data from, from other areas? It just strikes me that that's just a, a really impressive number.
It is a very impressive number. Um, because we have done so many studies now, you can go to creativemn.org and surf around and look at the results of other studies. There is a, a local studies tab where you can see the results of all of the other studies that we've done over the last six years. It's a good question. I didn't actually look to go see how your number, uh, what, what other comparables you might have had. But I would say this is probably one of the larger ones amongst, you know, I don't think you guys like to call yourself suburban, but the non-St. Paul, Minneapolis surrounding area. I would say this is probably one of the bigger.
That's, and I will go take a look. And, and actually, I, I think I had the pleasure of hearing you. I think it was right here in the council chambers, last year, a couple of years ago, I believe you, you presented the statewide data.
Yeah, actually, I'm a frequent visitor to Bloomington. And in fact, I had tickets to Artistry when COVID hit, and I was so disappointed I didn't get to come out and see the show. But, um, yeah, I, I think what you're doing in Bloomington is just a model for the rest of the state. The public-private partnership, the, um, close relationship between, um, the arts organizations and the city and the awareness of the public placemaking project. And you're just doing so many interesting things. And I think the rest of the state would do well to pay attention.
Thank you. That's nice of you to say. Appreciate that. I see that Councilmember Beloga has hands, his hand up. Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you very much. Sheila, I'd like to echo the mayor's comments about, uh, your being present tonight and previously. And, uh, you know, personally, I look at arts and I think they're the soul of a community and are absolutely necessary to ensure that the community is a vibrant place for both residents and visitors. So, uh, your report really calls that out more in terms of the economic, uh, parts of it, because they're more readily quantifiable than what it does for someone's spirit, which is quite intangible and hard to get your hands around. But I do have one question on one of your numerics. And, uh, not to detract from the report, but, uh, on, uh, in our agenda page twenty-eight, it shows that, uh, there are nine-hundred thousand dollars of taxes and fees collected by the city of Bloomington annually. And, um, I have to ask, uh, our city manager where that goes, because I've never seen that amount on our, uh, financial statements for the community. So.
The revenues cited there are state and local government revenues. So it's everything from payroll taxes to fees to, um, you know, every way that a community would collect revenue from activities. State and local added together.
Yeah, uh, so much of that, it's really, I think, more useful to look at the community's benefit rather than state and, you know, such things as payroll taxes and, and such that go to the state. Because obviously, the city, you know, the community that's sponsoring these don't have the benefits. So, but, so that's something for you to think about, or maybe strengthen the verbiage on what the amount stands for. Cause I was confused in that and appreciate your explanation. So, thank you much.
And it, and it's true that the presence of arts in a community builds social cohesion, especially these days when everybody seems to be fighting with each other. When you have a community sing together, when you have a community working on a mural together, attending a production at Artistry together, seeing a show together. Those communal experiences are the things that draw us back together over those divides. And I think we need a lot more of that in, in our communities.
Here, here.
Couldn't agree more. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually believe Councilmember Coulter had his hand up first, but.
You guys are so polite. I just see the hands go up and I miss who gets it up first and we, we need, okay. Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Nelson.
All right. I, thank you, Mayor. I will be quick. Um, thank you, Sheila, for, for being here. And, um, we, I think, interacted before when I served on the board for the Purpitch Center for, for arts education a few years ago. So thank you for your work with that as well. Um, you know, and I, I was, it's, it's interesting, Councilmember Beloga, that you, you made the comments you made, because I, I, I think the, the effect it had, that the arts have us on as people is, I think it's directly tied to the economic benefit. I think, you know, people, obviously, they, you know, the, the, the joy and the experience that we get from, from, uh, attending plays and, and shows and, and going to museums and so on. I, you know, I think that's exactly why people spend money on the arts. So I, I think, um, it was just an interesting way to think about that. But my, my question, Sheila, I'm wondering, and I know obviously with, you know, with some of the, um, the, the jobs and so on, it's a little bit hard to differentiate. But I'm wondering if, if it's possible to sort of, um, I don't know, if there's a ratio or something about what, you know, the, the contribution of, uh, like visual arts as compared to performing arts, or if it's even possible to break that down. Just because I think, um, you know, obviously in Bloomington, we, we have artistry. But I'm wondering if there are just sort of some general themes as far as how sort of different, uh, media, as it were, have different effects, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it, it, uh, performing arts tends to drive more people to go a play, to a place. If you have, uh, if you have a museum, tend, by and large, they tend to have a little bit lower attendance. I, I, I'm not talking about the Minneapolis Institute of Art or the Walker, you know, the really big guys. But in a community of your size, the museums tend to be a bit smaller. Um, and also performing arts, you know, they're in the business of bringing big crowds together and doing a show. And, um, people all go out, they go out to eat before they go to the show. They go, they might go to a bar and talk about the event afterwards. They might be buying souvenirs, you know, the performing arts seems to push a lot more people through a community. But it can depend, you know, if you had an arts fair, um, an outdoor arts fair where individual artists are selling their artwork of many kinds, whether it's pottery or glass or paintings or whatever, those two can draw very large, uh, groups of people who come from a dis, quite a distance to spend money in town and buy those products. So, um, I guess it depends, it's in an event-by-event thing. But in general, we're finding way more performing arts attendees than we are attendees at other events.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, just a couple of quick questions here. Um, what I'm wondering is how specific to Bloomington this was, I, especially, how did you measure the economic impact for Bloomington? Was it looking at the number of people that attended events? And then how did you figure out what they spent at a restaurant, a hotel, gas, whatever they, they got in the community?
Sure. There's two, two measurements that are added together for the total economic impact. One is what are the nonprofit arts and culture organizations spending in town? What is their annual expense budget? Nonprofit arts and culture organizations tend to spend their dollars extremely locally. So if they're catering, it's almost always a local restaurant. If they're printing, they're using a local printer, um, they're paying their light and heat bill, you know, you name it. It's very, it's a very localized impact. So we count the expense budget of the organization, and then we don't use any multipliers. It is direct spending in the community by those organizations. Um, people have, you know, they suspect things where you use all these multiples and it's always a mystery. Well, where are you getting that data from? Well, we don't need to do that, because the organizations are spending directly in the community. So that's what the four-point-three million is, is the total budgets of the organizations themselves. The seven-point-eight million, you have two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty individual attendees at events. Those were counted by the organizations themselves, reporting their own attendees at their own events, and then we add them up. Then we multiply that by the per-spending amount. The per-spending, the per-person spending amount is found through extensive, uh, event surveying in person. So for the statewide study, we collected about six-and-a-half thousand individual spending surveys from attendees at arts events statewide. Uh, we collected, you know, I'm sorry, I can't quite remember. I think it was fifteen hundred from the metro area attendees. And so we're using those, um, an average of the reported spending by the fifteen hundred-some attendees at seven-county metro area events. And then just multiplying that out. So it's pretty simple.
Okay. Thank you. I, I appreciate that clarification for it. Um, and this isn't really related to yours, but one of the concerns that I've had is, you know, I know a lot of that is driven by the, um, Bloomington Arts Center there, and we don't have restaurants in the vicinity. I know our, uh, Lyndale Avenue corridor project, I'd ask a question when we're looking at this. And part that looked at going towards Civic Plaza was removed from that study. And, and this isn't really related to you, but what I'm trying to figure out is what are those economic drivers? And how do we do a better job of, um, of providing those types of amenities that people are looking for? So a place to eat, a place to go grab a drink afterwards, all of those types of things. Um, clearly, we have hotels in Bloomington for people to come to the community and stay. So, um, I guess the, the only follow-up question I had to that is, from your studies, outside of the direct spend, what are the biggest drivers, economic drivers within the community? Is it restaurant? Is it hotel? Are there other things that should be on our radar as we're looking to sort of expand, um, the benefit to our community of these organizations?
Well, I think, uh, one of the most important things is collaboration between the different sectors, that the arts organizations should be part of the Chamber of Commerce, that the, and the JCs and all of the other community building organizations in town. And for all I know, they, they already are. But one of the problems you see in a community where there's not a lot of growth in the arts sector is that the city council folks are very separate from the arts folks, are very separate from the economic development people. Everybody's off in their little silo. So what you need is a lot of conversation and bringing together, I just, the power of a cup of coffee, you know, bring together the city manager, the city council, the mayor, the arts organizations, and the Chamber of Commerce, and have wide-ranging conversations about how can we all work together to promote the fantastic things that are going on in Bloomington and build them up together. And, uh, and one example is in Grand Rapids, they have the First Friday events where all the bars and restaurants are open, and they host individual artists, um, work and shows on the walls of their bars and restaurants. The local art center is open, the local, um, performing arts center is open. And people come from, you know, they'll drive for two hours to go to this event on First Fridays all over greater Minnesota to enjoy all the opportunities that are happening in town over this one night. And that's a collaboration between the, the city council, the Chamber of Commerce, the city council via the, um, they have a new, um, Arts and Culture Commission is the city. And then the Chamber of Commerce in collaboration with the organizations and the artists all working together. So we need everybody into one group, talking together and figuring out how to help each other promote is, um, probably the most effective ways to turbocharge the arts community. And of course, money invested in the arts and culture events themselves and administration, helping with, um, for example, in, um, can't remember which town it was, the Chamber of Commerce in one of the towns I worked with, they were doing micro grants for the arts and culture, uh, organizations to promote events and doing collaborations where they would, um, urge their customers to go to the arts event. And the arts event would have, you know, information about the local bars and restaurants. And so everybody's cross-promoting, um, and that to help build this culture of, you know, you go out to eat and then you go to the show, or you have an arts fair. And while you're in town, why don't you go shop downtown? And so everybody's sharing information and promotion.
Thank you very much. And that's, yeah, that's really what I was looking for. And I appreciate that there are some models for that. And I think it fits very well in what the mayor's talked about, of alignment with our organizations in the city and things like that to really sort of drive that value. One last quick question, and again, this probably isn't to the scope of this, but one of the concerns that I've had is our creative workers in the COVID economy. A lot of them fall in a gap. They aren't employees, um, they aren't small businesses. And, um, you know, how are they doing? And?
Yeah, this is, this has been a terrible time for arts, artist workers. Yeah.
Yeah. Are there things that at the state level, at local level, uh, other places that you're seeing to, to help with that? Um, I know I was happy that the city council, um, continued to fund organizations and things like that, even though we have a, um, significant budget, uh, issues and stuff. But I think they are important, as Councilmember Beloga said. But are there things you're seeing that, that are happening to help these individuals and, and groups?
Well, we've had a lot of really, um, fruitful conversations with the governor's office about being aware of and paying attention to the gig worker economy and how they're falling through the cracks in the unemployment system. Um, and so the state of Minnesota was very deliberate about including access to unemployment, uh, payments for gig workers. And they, um, they set up a specific system for gig workers to go through the unemployment, um, application process. The, um, second thing was when the state passed some COVID relief recently, um, they made sure to list nonprofit arts and culture organizations as specifically eligible to that county relief. And so we were urging organizations to apply for that. The PPP loans, a lot of nonprofits were eligible for that. And not all of them got it, but some did, and that helped them continue to pay artists and other employees, um, through the gap. Uh, one of my board members was in Toronto during the SARS, uh, pandemic. And he said that it took about two years for audiences to return. So we aren't at the end of the pandemic yet. And I don't, I don't know if that means once the pandemic ends, it'll take two years for the audiences to recover to where they were? Or what? So that's kind of a cautionary word that it's going to take some time for audiences to be comfortable in large groups again. And we may be having to do accommodations of, you know, some smaller percentage of, of capacity in auditoriums and galleries and things for quite a while, which is going to make it even harder for artists and arts organizations to, um, make it through. So it's up to all of us to be aware of that and to do what we can to help those organizations make it through so that these fantastic community assets, um, will continue to be available to citizens after the pandemic is over, when we're all going to be so excited to be in person again. And to go, the next time I get to go to a show and sit in the audience and the curtain goes up, I think I'm just gonna, just gonna cry with being so thrilled to finally be back. Um, and so I look forward to that at Artistry also.
Thank you very much. I think we're all looking forward to being able to do that again, and I appreciate that. And I think it's a good insight for the, the city and the council of kind of what we're facing going forward to help this and make sure this is a, something that survives and thrives in Bloomington. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Loman.
Well, thank you. I mean, darn it, Councilmember Nelson almost stole everything there. You know, I just, I want, what I wanted to just say to you is, uh, you know, certainly, um, arts has certainly played a significant role in my life, uh, throughout in different, uh, aspects of it. And, uh, how much I, I appreciate that. I, I think of Councilmember Beloga's statement in terms of, you know, how do you measure enjoyment? Uh, and I even kind of turned that around. And I think about how do you measure, uh, the experience and leadership and the types of things that, uh, the people I have been able to gain, uh, from that type of experience? So, uh, just two really short things. You know, these numbers and this information is valuable, um, but it also raises questions. Some folks kind of look at this and they kind of say, you know, um, you know, how do I understand, you know, this art type of work? And, you know, it, it doesn't make sense. Why should a city, you know, invest in it? And part of this is, you know, the, you know, kind of the, uh, the question of the finances that come in. And I think you've really kind of done a great job of kind of demonstrating that. But on the other hand, there's, there's that untangible piece of that. Is there any advice that you would, would, uh, would give our, our council? Our people who are looking at this, who maybe are not as familiar with, um, you know, just how? Cause I was quite surprised when I went on a number of conferences and they talked about the importance of arts in terms of, from the economic standpoint. But what advice would you give us in terms of, we try to communicate with our residents? Things that you've seen from other, other municipalities around and, and that's been affected?
Well, I think you can easily claim the mantle of an, uh, being an arts hub with the kind of numbers that you're looking at. It's a way to brand your community, to draw more residents and people to be interested in opening a businesses in a creative community than a place where there's not a lot offered. The fact that arts and culture of. The fact that arts and culture events draw people from outside of the community to spend money in the community. I mean, even if you don't care about the arts and you just don't get it, you'll get that, right? But also, you know, just going back to the previous conversation about, you know, the divisions in our society right now, we need every tool in our toolbox to bridge divisions. Or we're going to be in big trouble as a country. We need to figure out how to reach over those divides. And I think the arts are one of those ways that we can do that.
Well, thank you so much for for saying that. I had a second question. But really, I see our city manager wants to say something and I want to keep us moving here. But again, I want to thank you for your your passion around this issue. And just sharing this with us. It's so important. Not only, I like to look at this as generational work. And I'm so happy that our our past folks you know, handed this down to us. And now we've got to be good stewards of that. And that's the way I look at this. And that's why I appreciate this report that you're giving to us. So let me let me shut up so that our city manager can go ahead and say something here.
Thank you.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Sheila, thank you for being here tonight. Very much appreciate it. And I did want to follow up questions from Councilmember Nelson in the comments that Sheila made about, you know, when audiences are likely to return for arts or performances or exhibits. We actually just met today our acting Public Health Administrator and Leah Hughes and I met with one of our tenant arts organizations to talk about when the conditions may be ripe for people to begin so that they can do some future planning. And we're we're relatively confident, fingers crossed. I should say optimistic as opposed to confident that the presence of the vaccine really changes some of the calculus in terms of the return to audience participation. And we're we're hopeful that with with a successful rollout of the vaccine and something that approaches herd immunity, that hopefully our experience will be much improved over that two year lag time from from
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm optimistic too. I think I think it'll be sooner.
And I share your optimism and and hope that's the case because it's it's been a dark time in a lot of different ways. And to be without the arts has made it even darker. So looking forward to their return. Counsel, any additional questions? If not, Ms. Smith, thank you so very much for being with us tonight. You're always welcome here in Bloomington. Please join us again. Love to hear you again to speak as your organization continues your research, continues your work. And next time you're you're here for a show at Artistry, as I said, you're you're always welcome here in Bloomington. So thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. I really look forward to coming back again.
Very good.
Bye.
Have a good evening. Let's move on then to item five point one on our agenda. Which is the 2020 annual report and the 2021 work plan for our Human Rights Commission. And Melissa Wurst Prasad is going to kick us off, but I think we have other members of the Human Rights Commission here as well. Good evening, Ms. Wurst Prasad. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I am Melissa Wurst Prasad, as the mayor said, and I serve as staff liaison for the city's Human Rights Commission. So joining me this evening are Molly Bosu, who is serving as the chair's current chairperson. And our past chair Jared Lees is also joining us tonight as well. And we are going to provide highlights of the 2020 annual report and 2021 work plan. Sorry, said difficulty advancing. I'm just wanted to give a little background for those that might be watching at home and just to remind everyone of the purpose of the Human Rights Commission. It is starting its fifty third year. I was formed in nineteen sixty eight shortly after the assassination of Dr. King. And it was formed for the purpose of aiding and advising the city council and ensuring for all residents of the city equal opportunity in those areas protected by law and in such other affairs that might affect the social standards of the city. So the commission guides its work primarily from the Minnesota Human Rights Act. And on the screen in front of you is a listing of the protected classes, which are found on the left column. And the protected areas such as employment and housing found on the right column. And I would now like to introduce Jared Lees, who will provide highlights from the commission's work plan this past year. However, I would like to just take a quick moment to thank Jared for his six years of service on the commission. He has provided strong leadership for us as vice chair and then in the role of chair for the past three years. He has a number of accomplishments, including his work on the city's fair housing policy, collaborations with the Minnesota Federal District Courts, and programs including welcome meals and Diversity Day Unity Awards. So we will all miss working with him and wish him the best. And with that, I will now hand the presentation to Jared.
Good evening, Mr. Lees, and I'll I'll echo Melissa's comments. Thanks so very much for your six years of service on the Human Rights Commission. You did outstanding work, greatly appreciated. Thanks for your work for all of Bloomington. And it's very good to see you again. Haven't seen you in a while. So welcome.
It has been a while. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city manager and those attending. I am excited to chat about twenty twenty. And I'm very excited to hand over to the current chair, Ms. Bosu, to talk about what's coming in the future, as I will be closely watching as time goes on. So as you may remember, in early twenty twenty, you approved a work plan that let us focus on seven categories of action, as you can see here. We'll have one slide for each, and then I have just a few additional comments as we work our way through. Next slide. So our first point, our first point of action for twenty twenty was policy and program research. The commission in recent years has really wanted to look at city policy so that we can have a chance to think about programs that we're working on, programs that the city is doing and policy that the city is providing with a human rights lens. It may not be something that we have a direct role in playing. But to make sure the commission is aware of policies, the city is looking at programs. A few highlights, we did compile and provide a letter of support for declaring racism as a public health crisis. We also provided our feedback on the racial equity business plan that was put together earlier in twenty twenty. So really, really working hard on looking at those things with that human rights lens and giving feedback where applicable. That's our first point. Next slide. Our second point unfortunately was smaller than we would have hoped. But it was community and educational events, something we usually try and participate greatly in throughout the city. Things like Kite Day, things like the egg hunt and other opportunities. One opportunity we did have very early in the year was our Day of Racial Healing. A really excellent turnout. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your introductory remarks in that event, the facilitation. It was an enlightening event. It was in our nature. Sponsored with the Human Rights Commission as well as with Faith Jackson on city staff. Excellent, please. A piece that I think we've really focused on within the Human Rights Commission in twenty twenty, and I know that Chair Bosu will speak about this for twenty twenty one are the proclamations that we send to council each year that mayor can read. You'll see them listed here, Martin Luther King Junior Day, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, Pride Month, the International Day of Peace, Native American Heritage Month, Human Rights Day, were the proclamations for twenty twenty. I wanted to note that human rights focused statements are a priority for the commission. We think that having things online create additional engagement to reach a broad audience that may not always be attending in person council meetings. And so recognizing and thinking of these groups through proclamations continue to show our stance and our support of those groups and organizations and recognize these important milestones throughout the year. Excellent. The Bloomington Human Rights Commission continues to partner with other local commissions, state and federal partnerships. Ms. Wurst Prasad did mention work with the federal district courts in the past. Usually that is in the form of a naturalization ceremony that comes in the fall. So we did not host an in person naturalization ceremony in twenty twenty. However, our commission does refer discrimination reports back to the State Department of Human Rights. We maintain a close relationship with the State Department of Human Rights. And you can see how those referrals are broken down throughout the course of the year. But continuing that partnership, and I would say on a side note on this slide, in the recent few months, several other local cities have reached out to the Human Rights Commission for information on either starting or restarting a Human Rights Commission in their own city. So seeing the work that Bloomington is doing is having an impact on other localities. And I will say it's a very welcome conversation for me to have with anyone throughout the state. Next slide. The Human Rights Commission does focus a lot on our marketing, sharing those proclamations, sharing stories, sharing news and sharing information about what is and isn't illegal under the Minnesota State Human Rights Act. A lot of that goes just back into the website. We expand a lot of items on there as well as including information about individual topics like when is housing discrimination illegal, under what categories? And then again, we can refer people back to the state or provide some resources here in the city. We also advertise on Facebook and Twitter sometimes. But really, outdoor signage outside of Creekside, outside of Civic Plaza tends to get good response. So when we do have, whether it's commission openings, upcoming events, advertising on those boards and just trying to get in front of eyes and traffic tends to work well for our marketing of the work of the commission. Next slide. This is the slide I was most excited to talk about. The Human Rights Commission became the complete count committee for the city of Bloomington. We partnered with a number of organizations and with people to focus on how do we improve the self response rate to the census in twenty twenty. So you can see here for the city, we ended with just shy of an eighty four percent response rate. Now, I did put together a few numbers off of the census's website. You can dig into specific response rates both by city and by census tract. So a few notes I wanted to say. In twenty ten, Bloomington ended at just over eighty percent as a total response rate. So we did improve almost four percent. What I found most important that is that every single census tract within the city of Bloomington improved their response rate. A couple were very, you know, great in twenty ten, and they only had about a one to two percent increase, but some tracks had up to a seven percent response rate increase, which equates to a lot of people. The Human Rights Commission and our group did focus a lot on the eastern edges of Bloomington. Those are had a past history of being underreported. And we actually saw a three percent increase in reporting in the furthest east census tract in the city, which I was extremely excited to see. But again, feel free to play around on the census website by tract and you can see what parts of the city did improve. But again, every census tract within Bloomington increased their response rate, something we were very excited to see. Next slide, please. Now, a category we focus on each year is professional development. And I have two notes that I wanted to say on this. One, converting to an online format. You're all living it. You're all experiencing it. Many of us are experiencing it in our workplace as well. But I was very proud to say we only had one meeting in twenty twenty that was canceled. And that was the date that the city of Bloomington shut down in mid March. Every meeting since then was held with a quorum for the Human Rights Commission. And so we were able to continue our discussions and our work throughout the year, even while adapting to this online environment. And kudos to city staff for facilitating that and allowing us to continue our work. The other piece I want to mention on this is we like to do officers. If you may remember, we adapted our bylaws so that officers now serve eighteen month terms to ensure some consistency. In my case, that term was cut short with my tenure ending, but again, allowing for longer terms of executive officers on the commission. But we elected new officers this year, and that is always a great opportunity for commissioners to develop both within the commission, within the city, to make those additional connections. And I think that falls well within our category of professional development. Next slide, please. And lastly, we have special projects. There's always something that we're working on, something we're discussing, something we're focused on. In twenty twenty, we worked towards installing gender neutral bathroom signage on all single user public restrooms throughout the city and public buildings. I want to report, we had some really great progress. With a lot of buildings being closed for COVID related reasons, it was easier to get into some of those buildings and do that work and have those signs replaced. So we installed sixteen signs throughout the city. And you'll see we have eight new signs that will be added at the Dread Scout Wheelhouse during renovation as well. So going in with that. But converting any single use restroom within the city facility just to a general neutral bathroom sign, we thought was an important project to work on. And that part of that signage did come out of the Human Rights Commission's budget. And that is the twenty twenty annual report. I'd invite any comments or questions on that section before I hand it back to Ms. Wurst Prasad for introductions.
Counsel, any questions, comments? I think other than a very general well done, considering the challenges we've all faced in twenty twenty. I appreciate the work that you and the the commission did. So thanks. Thanks very much. Ms. Wurst Prasad?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to now introduce our current chairperson, Molly Bosu, who is going to cover the twenty twenty one work plan.
Good evening, Ms. Bosu. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. And thank you, Melissa, for that introduction. And thank you so much, Jared, again. You are going to be greatly missed on our commission and we can, we're gonna bring you back in in lots of ways in the in the upcoming years. So yeah, thank you so much. So I am going to share the overview of our twenty twenty one work plan. And so as you can see on this slide, for twenty twenty one, we've identified six categories for action. And they are as such, policy and program research, community and educational events, state and federal partnerships, special projects, marketing and promotion and data tracking. And so on the following slides, I'm going to be going through each of these categories and giving you just a general overview of what our upcoming plans look like. Next slide. We continue to look at policies and programs. And currently, one of our projects within this category is our work on the conversion therapy ban. We will be bringing a draft of this ordinance banning the practice by licensed mental health professionals for minors and vulnerable adults back to council next week. And in addition, we do continue to follow the fair housing policy, which the HRC helped to draft in two thousand eighteen. And help to draft and see adopted. We will also be monitoring the city's updated reasonable accommodations policy to ensure that accommodations for people with disabilities are provided so that individuals can fully participate in programs, events and services. Next slide. We will be continuing to partner with the Committee Outreach and Engagement Division, along with other commissions and departments to provide community and educational events, including Pride Month in June. Another project we'll be working on this year is the Just Deeds Project. And this is the task of removing racial covenants from property deeds. And although these are illegal and unenforceable, they do exist on properties in the Twin Cities, including in Bloomington. And send the wrong and harmful message of who is welcome in this community. We want to proactively renounce this form of racial discrimination as well as educate our community on their history and the continued racial segregation disparities resulting from these covenants. And then lastly, in this category is our more recent activities for Martin Luther King Day, which included providing books on diversity, race and empowerment in the little free libraries across the city. Next slide. Okay. We look forward to our partnership opportunities at the state, federal and city level. One example of such a partnership is having the commissioners serve on the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee. And this is a team that's being put together by the Racial Equity Coordinator and other staff from community services in order to bring together residents, community organizations and others to create a shared vision for the work that we need to do together to address and eliminate racial disparities in our community. We're also connected with the State Department of Human Rights through their quarterly meetings with local commissions. And we're not sure if we're going to be able to do a naturalization ceremony. And it will not this year. But it's always, it's been part of our previous work plans, and we really hope that we are able to do it again very soon. As obviously, as Jared mentioned, it was not something that we were able to do in twenty twenty, along with many other things. Next slide. So our next category, special projects. First off, we will First off, we will continue with the annual Omar Bandar Human Rights Award. These are pictures from the 2020 award recipients. And so although it was unfortunate that we were unable to celebrate ours in person this year, we really appreciated the assistance of the city's communications division in providing videos of our 2020 recipients and plan to continue that in the future. This really helped increase visibility of the awardees and share the value of human rights work, just to the entire city of Bloomington. We were able to put those on social media and our city's webpage and just shared the value that we hold in human rights work in the city. Next slide. And then one of our other special projects that we're going to continue to work on is to increase the city's score on the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equality Index. And so the Human Rights Campaign is a national civil rights organization, and the Municipal Equality Index, or the MEI, is a nationwide evaluation of municipal laws, policies, and services affecting the LGBTQ community. And as one of the largest cities in the state, Bloomington is one of 506 cities being evaluated nationwide. With the assistance of Tracy Smith from our Community Origin Engagement Division, we were able to increase our city's score from 48 to 77 in 2020. That's a score out of 100, and hope to see it even higher in 2021. And so the criteria for evaluation includes non-discrimination laws, municipal services, and relationship with law enforcement, and we continue to, yeah, to work towards that score. Next slide. The commission will be looking at revising its marketing materials to increase visibility in the community. We also plan to access any opportunities for the Bloomington community to engage with the Human Rights Commission, and of course, vice versa. And whether, you know, whether that be online, virtually, or hopefully, in the near term, some in-person events, such as the farmer's market and the Jump Start School Supply Events in the summer. We will continue to look for ways to bring greater awareness to human rights issues through communication, the Bloomington Briefing, the Sun Current, and the city's webpage and social media sites. Next slide. So our last action category is data tracking. We plan to work more closely on identifying data trends related to reports of discrimination made either through our staff liaison or through the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. We will also continue to serve on the district's equity, or the school district's Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee, and to participate in conversations with community members and organizations, including the Bloomington Anti-Racist Coalition. All right, next slide. So thank you so much for having your time here tonight, and at this time, Jared, or I myself, and also Jared, I'm sure, are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Bosu.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? I see no hands going up. So that tells me that you put together a very good plan. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Carter, I don't, your hand's not going up here on the screen, but I know you're having technical difficulties. Councilmember Carter?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I am on a different device, and I'm having troubles figuring out how to raise my hand. So, so thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Jared and Molly, for all the work that you've been done, Jared, for your leadership over the past six years. I just have one quick question. So for the Municipal Equality Index, do you have, do you know off the top of your head what the opportunities are for us to improve, kind of like the broader categories? Or is that really part of the work of 2021, to really start digging into that?
Yeah, I can take that question. The, I actually have a report printed up, our report printed out right here, anticipating this question. So, you know, we, some of the things that got us to the score that we, the way we, which we improved the score are things like the all-gender bathroom signage, and so some of those types of things. The convert, the work on conversion therapy is also a way to improve the score. And, you know, looking at some of where, where we can improve, there are generally, you know, I mean, generally five categories, and some of the municipal services. So, for example, one way to improve a score would be to have an LGBTQ liaison in the city executive office. So some of them are at more of a city level. Also, and I guess, Melissa, you may be able to answer this question a little bit more as well. I know you've taken a lot of time looking at this. So, you know, I think in general, I am just kind of immersing myself in this, so I definitely want to know how we could get to that score and what ways, but yeah, that's part of the work.
And I do just want to chime in on this point, Melissa, before you say that too, is that Molly noted a pretty dramatic score increase, and part of that was due to the Human Rights Commission really digging into each individual point, and Tracy Smith assisted, Melissa's office assisted, but finding things that we may have already been doing in the city or focusing on them and reporting back, because really growing that score almost 30 points in a year seems unprecedented, but it was, you know, part of the city taking the time to focus in on all of those aspects and show that it was important to us and show that it mattered, and reporting back on those things.
Thank you, Jared. I'll just add, Councilmember Carter, to that question, that some of it, we weren't able to get points on because they're in process, such as the proposed conversion therapy ordinance. Some of it is staffing-related, or I know on the Multicultural Advisory Committee for the Police Department, they do have someone serving on that that is a member of the LGBTQ community, but that doesn't meet the qualification of having a paid staff person in the Police Department. So we're looking at some of those things and then seeing if there's additional documentation that we can send that demonstrates the role that they're providing to try to increase the score in some of those areas.
Great, thank you so much.
Counsel, any additional questions? I am seeing none, so this is, this is an item that we need to approve, and so I'd look for a motion now to approve the Human Rights Commission 2021 work plan.
So move.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
I would move to approve the 2020 annual report and the 2021 work plan for the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beloga, and a second by Councilmember Martin to approve the Human Rights Annual Report for 2020 and the work plan for 2021. Counsel, any further? Hearing none, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. So, Chair Bosu and Past Chair Leece, thank you so very much. Appreciate your presentation this evening, appreciate your service to the city, appreciate the work that you do on the Human Rights Commission. And to Ms. Wirs Prasad, thank you for your guidance from a professional staff standpoint for this organization, and be sure to pass on to the rest of the Human Rights Commission our thanks and appreciation for the work that you do.
Thank you so much for having us.
Very good. Have a good evening. Thanks for being with us.
Good evening.
With that, let's move on to item six on our agenda. Item six is our consent business, and I believe Councilmember Nelson has the consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I heard from the city manager that we had two holds, item 6.1 and 6.8. Does anybody have another hold that may have been missed? All right, hearing none, I would move approval of items 6.2 through 6.7.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson, a second by Councilmember Carter to approve the consent business as stated, item 6.2 to 6.7. Hearing no further, council discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. Councilmember Nelson, item 6.1.
Yeah, that was held by Councilmember Loman.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor and City Manager. This, this item here is basically, we're acknowledging the receipt of the report requesting penalties and interest abatement of five of our hotels in Bloomington. And what I wanted to just be sure is that we, the city manager, or if our finance person is available, Floria, I don't know if she was available, to just clarify for the general public what that means. I've seen a number of folks that are just confused about what this means and what this stands for. I mean, some folks understand that they won't have to pay their taxes, and I wanted you to clarify that for me and for the public.
I would agree, Councilmember Loman, I think there is a lot of confusion and misunderstanding regarding this. Mr. Fabrucci, can you help clear some of this up for us?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Loman, and council members. This is an action item that we bring before the council occasionally. It has been a longstanding past practice preceding my time here as well, that we provide leniency for our hotel operators on a one-time basis, that if they have a delinquent payment for any number of reasons, that it could have not been postmarked by the correct date, that maybe it was missed in their processing. If the payment wasn't handled properly, there, there are any number of reasons about why a payment may be delinquent. And so we have generally provided a one-time forgiveness, and that's what the tax abatement or the abatement is for the delinquency. We are not, and I want to be real clear about this, we are not abating the lodging taxes that are due. What's being abated is the penalty and any interest that accrues on the penalty for that delinquency. So this is not anything that's going to negatively affect our budget, because, you know, we don't generally plan for, this is part of our budget, so we're not losing money, as it were, for the, for the one-time forgiveness. I think it's also important to point out that we have had, especially recently, a number of operators that have asked for some forgiveness and have been declined. We've had six, as a matter of fact, just in the last couple of months, that already have a forgiveness on their record and asked for leniency. And, you know, there was certainly an amount of sympathy there, given the challenge that the hotel operators have faced over the course of the last year. However, we did deny the request, and we did so for a couple of reasons. One, it's pretty well-established past practice that we give, we're willing to give every operator a one-time pass. And the second was that there's a fairness issue for Bloomington taxpayers, that we shouldn't be doing this on a regular basis. And then the third is that the way that these taxes are collected is very clear. It's itemized on the hotel bill, and there should be a separate account set up. So the, the money for the taxes should go right into their account that then just gets remitted to the city. I think with a number of operators over the course of the last year, because of the economic impact of the pandemic, especially back in April and May, may have been taking funds from wherever they had them to meet operating expenses. And that's already, that's already an item that should have been stotted somewhere else. And so we didn't think that was right, especially for Bloomington taxpayers, that they were using money due to the, to the city to cover other operating expenses. So what we're doing here, again, just to sum it up, we are not abating their taxes, we're abating the penalties and interests on a one-time basis for a delinquency incidents.
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor, for clarifying that, that their taxes are not being waived or being, being pushed away, making that very clear, that they will be continuing to pay those taxes. It's the penalties and the interest that is being abated from, from this piece of it. We've done this in the past, and I appreciate the fact that you've laid out the criteria that we've used in the past. This is a one-time piece for those operators, and so that taxpayers know what's taking place. I appreciate those folks who have reached out to council to get clarification on this. I know when I first started on council, this was very confusing, and so I'm glad that we were able to clarify this so that people understand that. If there aren't any other questions, Mayor, I'd be willing to move this forward.
I did see Councilmember Beloga's hand up. I don't know if your questions were answered, you're good, Councilmember? Okay. Are there any other questions, Council, City Council? I don't see any. I think a motion would be in order, Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to acknowledge the receipt of the report requesting penalties and interest abatement of the following five hotels. American Inn Hotel, DoubleTree Hotel, Embassy Suites Hotel, Hotel Inn Express Suites Hotel, and Home Two Suites Hotel.
Second, Beloga.
Got a motion by Councilmember Loman, and a second by Councilmember Beloga to adopt item 6.1 on our consent agenda. Hearing no further, council discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. Councilmember Nelson?
Item 6.8, I believe that Councilmember Beloga and I think yourself, Mayor, had asked to hold this one, so I guess I'll leave it to you, Mayor, to figure out who wants to speak first.
I'll tee it up, Jack, if you want to follow in and behind, however. I just wanted to bring this, this, for folks watching, this is an amendment to the Hennepin County Chief of Police Association Mutual Aid Pact. And this was a pact that the city of Bloomington entered back in October of 2014. City Council approved it, that the city of Bloomington would be party to a joint and cooperative agreement for the use of law enforcement, personnel, and equipment as part, as part of a pact developed by the Hennepin County Chiefs of Police Association. And there's a mutual aid pact, it's a, it's a seven or eight-year pact now, and what this would do would be make amendments to that pact. And, and what the city is doing is preparing for the, there's a select number of Bloomington police officers who are going to be assisting in the potential civil unrest that's expected or feared regarding some of the high-profile trials coming up next month. And so there is an amendment to our mutual aid pact that we're going to, that we're considering tonight. What I wanted to do in addition to talking about that, getting that clarified, I wanted to ask our Chief of Police, Mike Hartley, to come forward and just describe what is in this mutual aid pact, what it means for, for Bloomington officers, what it means for, for what they'll be doing in the event of civil unrest, and what it means long-term, just in terms of the finances, in terms of what they'll be doing, how they'll be doing it, and who will be there with them. So appreciate that Chief Hartley is with us this evening and willing to, to answer some of our questions. Good evening, Chief Hartley, are you there?
One minute.
One moment, standing by.
Chief?
There he is.
I am here.
Good evening, Chief, thanks so very much for being with us this evening. Did you hear my, my questions, my preamble to kind of frame this up a little bit?
I, I did. Mayor Bussie, members of the council, good evening, thanks for having me. In reference to the, the actions in front of you tonight, it does deal with an amendment to the Hennepin County Chiefs of Police Association Mutual Aid Pact. What this, this Exhibit A, if you will, lays out the parameters for reimbursing the city of Bloomington for if and when we send personnel to Minneapolis in the event of civil unrest. They have laid out Minneapolis and Hennepin County, a plan of action, if you will, to address possible civil unrest for this spring, for the high-profile trials. And so what Exhibit A does is it, it sets the parameters on what the reimbursement schedule will be for in the event we do assign people to details in Minneapolis, and also the rate of reimbursement. So at this point, we have identified a number of Bloomington police that will assist in Minneapolis with Hennepin County and Minneapolis. Those officers will not go down without supervision from Bloomington. They will be asked at this point to protect critical infrastructure, but in the event of, you know, unforeseen- protect critical infrastructure. Um, but, uh, in the event of, um, you know, unforeseen events, they could be called away from those, uh, details and asked to do other things. Uh, we will have somebody assigned to the multi-agency command center at all times when our folks are deployed outside of Bloomington. And, um, again, they will have, uh, a supervision. I think one thing that's important to know that, uh, with mutual aid, we don't assume the policies of other cities when we do send people. It's not uncommon, um, for Richfield to get busy on any given night and ask for us, uh, mutual aid to come help with their calls. Um, and so we, we still operate and function under our policies, our procedures, and, um, and so there's no deviation from that just because we're in another jur- jurisdiction.
Thank you, Chief Hartley. That, that's helpful to, um, to, to hear that explanation, just kind of the, the, the general framing of, of, uh, what this mutual aid pact, uh, what it means for, for Bloomington officers. Councilmember Beloga, did, did you have additional questions or additional things you wanted to bring up tonight?
No, I'm, uh, I'm happy to say that between your, uh, preamble and the chief's remarks that, uh, uh, the comments that I wanted to, uh, point out have already been addressed. So thank you much.
Very good. Councilmember Loman, I see your hand up. Is that, uh, a residual hand or a new hand?
It is a residual, uh, hand. Yeah, but I would say that, uh, I would agree with what, uh, Councilmember Beloga said, and I, I wanted to get clarification, um, on, uh, you know, what our role our officers would take outside of the, the city of Bloomington. So I appreciate that, that clarification.
Very good. Counsel, any additional questions? And just to follow up, Chief Hartley, so we, Bloomington has been part of this, this, um, mutual aid agreement for seven years now, and, and my understanding is that it, it has worked very well for, for all of the agencies involved for times when Bloomington goes to help other agencies within Hennepin County. And there are times also when agencies come to Bloomington and help Bloomington officers as well. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, member of city council, you're exactly right. Um, you know, recent memory, we've had, uh, our own protests at the Mall of America where we relied heavily on mutual aid. Um, we had to staff up for the Super Bowl and the contingent of offering protection to, uh, the teams as they stayed in our hotels. And so, um, it is an agreement that it served us well, and it's, um, obviously from a, a planning standpoint, it gives us the resources that we may not have internally, that we can reach out and receive from other jurisdictions.
Very good. Counsel, additional questions? Anything else? If not, uh, I would be willing to move item 6.8 on the consent agenda, the amendment to the Hennepin County Chiefs of Police Association Mutual Aid Pact.
Second.
We've got a motion by me and a second by Councilmember Beloga to, uh, approve item 6.8 on the consent agenda. Hearing no further council discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. I see Chief Hartley has ducked out already, but thank you, Chief Hartley, for, uh, for taking the time to explain that to us this evening. Greatly appreciated.
Uh, much appreciated, Mr. Mayor, and I think I'll be back for a, uh, presentation here in a little bit.
Looking forward to it. Thank you much. Let's move on to, uh, just in case you're tuning in late, we did have an item 7.1 on the agenda this evening, was a, a resolution for council rules of procedure amendments. We did remove that from the agenda, uh, as we started the meeting, and we've, uh, tabled that for a, a date in the future, uh, when we'll take a look at our council rules of procedure, which now can bring us then to item eight on our agenda, which is our organizational business, and in particular, item 8.1, which is a proposed spot transportation safety improvements that are associated with the 2021 pavement management program projects. Uh, Amy Marone from our traffic department is here this evening to lead us off. I think we've got others as well, but, um, good evening, Ms. Marone. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, thank you for, um, thanks for having us. And, um, as you mentioned, we did present the, the spot improvement project, um, that's being proposed at the February 8th meeting, and we're back tonight to, uh, just do a quick overview of each of the three improvement projects that are proposed and to provide an opportunity for public comment on those. So the three locations, again, are American Boulevard West, um, and I will be presenting that item. Uh, the second one is West 86th Street at Lyndale Avenue, and our traffic and transportation engineer, Kirk Roberts, will be presenting that. And West 106th Street at Decatur Avenue will be presented by our traffic management coordinator, coordinator, Paul Jarvis. All right, so here's the American Boulevard segment, just as a quick reminder of what we have planned here. Um, we studied the segment of American Boulevard on, uh, the west side of town between East Bush Lake Road and Norman Center Drive. Um, there is going to be, uh, uh, PMP overlay of this roadway this year, and so we, we're looking at an opportunity to make some changes in this area. We have a couple of major known concerns. Um, the first one is, uh, that there is no good pedestrian or no controlled pedestrian crossing location for a very long segment of American Boulevard. Yet we have a lot of residential, um, properties on the north side of American Boulevard and some really great destinations on the south side. So looking for a way to improve a pedestrian crossing. Um, and then the second issue that we're looking to address was, uh, speeding concerns along American Boulevard. And while, um, this roadway is clearly designed with the four lanes to carry a large number of vehicles, uh, the traffic volumes are actually closer to five or 6,000 vehicles per day, um, well below the, the need for four lanes or for two lanes in each direction. One of the things that results with that, um, kind of overbuild of lane cross-section can be, uh, an increase in vehicle speeds. Um, the concern that we have with that is primarily, um, results in it's very difficult for drivers who are entering or exiting American Boulevard to adequately judge gaps when there is, uh, very inconsistent, uh, vehicle speeds. So our public outreach, given the, the conditions, um, and not having in-person meetings, um, we did use our, um, Let's Talk Bloomington site and provided information there, along with an opportunity for a resident survey. Um, all of the feedback from the survey was included in the council packet, um, and we just had four pretty simple questions, um, trying to gauge support for, for the proposal and making sure that we, um, that there weren't any other issues that we were unaware of, um, that we should be trying to address. Uh, so, um, given the low traffic volumes on this roadway and the issues that we're trying to address with the, um, with, during the overlay project, we, staff is recommending that we convert the striping cross-section, um, not move the curb lines, but just modify the striping to convert it from the existing four-lane roadway to a three-lane cross-section, which would be one through lane in each direction, a du- center dual left turn lane, and bike lanes on each, in each direction on the outside. Um, the, some of the benefits of this three-lane cross-section is that it provides a dedicated left turn space. It can reduce the outlier speeding. Um, it provides a striped shoulder space or bike lanes for cyclist and, uh, for bus stops. And it provides, um, space for our second goal, which is to construct a pedestrian refuge island at Normandale Lake Boulevard intersection. Um, and this is a, a little bit of a graphic that would show what that could look like. Um, so we would be proposing or recommending on the, uh, west side of the intersection of American Boulevard at Normandale Lake Boulevard, um, a pedestrian refuge island, which, um, the construction of a pedestrian refuge island, which is an eight-foot median in the center of the roadway with a pedestrian, with pedestrian ramp, ramps going through it. And the benefits to, for pedestrian safety of that are that they, it significantly decreases the crossing distance. So, um, pedestrians are navigating one through lane of traffic at a time instead of stepping off the curb and navigating four through lanes of traffic, um, minimize, which minimizes the pedestrian exposure to vehicles. It also increases awareness for drivers on where to expect the pedestrians and provides additional warnings with the additional signage. Um, so I can pause now, um, for opportunity for questions and discussions on this section. And then, Mr. Mayor, I will leave it up to you if you would like to open up and have the public, um, comments on just this segment, or if you'd like to do them all at the end.
I think it makes good sense to, to get all the questions and comments, uh, lumped together and, and out of the way at once, if, uh, if that would work. I'm, I'm looking at Ms. Wilson to make sure that we could do that if need be, and I think we can. So, uh, let's start with, uh, council discussion or questions. Any questions, council, on this, uh, on the presentation on the American Boulevard West modifications? Do not see hands going up. So we did, uh, we did commit, we wanted to make sure that we had time for public comment on this. So, um, Ms. Wilson, could, could you see if there are people specific to this section, to the American Boulevard West proposal that is out there, if there's anyone who would like to comment on that?
Leia, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Loud and clear.
Great. Do we have any callers that wish to speak to the city council about the proposed project on American Boulevard West?
If anyone who wants to speak on that agenda, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Once again, whoever wants to speak on that agenda, please press star one on your telephone keypad. I'm seeing no one wishes to speak. Please continue.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Counsel, one last call for questions. If not, well, let's move on.
All right. I will pull up the slides, and, um, Kirk Roberts will join and be presenting again this, briefly, the section of West 86th Street through the intersection of Lyndale Avenue.
Right. Good evening, mayor and council.
Evening, Ms. Roberts.
Just a brief summary of the longer presentation that I gave you previously on this, uh, looking at the intersection of 86th Street at Lyndale Avenue. And this is a key intersection along the 86th Street multimodal corridor. And then, uh, many of you remember in 2010, uh, the city undertook a significant study in public process before converting 86th Street from four lanes down to three lanes, its current configuration, which includes bike lanes on the shoulder, similar to the project that Amy just talked to you about on American Boulevard. The, however, at that time, because of concerns over delay, we had to maintain four lanes of traffic for the east and westbound approaches to Lyndale Avenue. It was a very busy intersection, signalized intersection there, and there was concern that we would add undue delay. Uh, and so we ended the bike lanes and went to a four-lane section there. Then in 2012, as part of some pavement reconstruction work, we improved the signal. We added new controller equipment. We added, uh, new signal phasing, communications, and the, the very well-known now flashing arrow arrows that you see throughout the city. And, um, after that, we did, um, we added some timing and some coordination along the corridor there. So the intersection's working more efficiently than it ever has in the past. And so then this summer, staff will be looking at the pavement on the east side of the intersection. And what we're proposing to do is, instead of the four lanes that we had to maintain in the past, we're looking to take this down to a single lane in both directions, or in the east and westbound approaches, um, and then extend that bike lane all the way through the intersection. The signal is operating efficiently enough that we can do this, uh, without incurring really any added delay to any specific user. And so the council, the, the, the proposed striping that you see in front of you is fairly minor, but that, that intersection was a significant part of the original 2010 study. And both the planning commission and the council weighed in on that. And they did want to make a nice multimodal corridor that served all users better, including our bike and pedestrian users, without incurring delay to any specific set. And so since that time, the city has continued to invest in their infrastructure. We invested in technology, and we invested in our traffic operations, so that now we can come back, we can change that lane configuration, we can serve the bicyclists better with, again, out, without unduly delaying any users. And so we're back seeking council support for that change.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Counsel, any questions on West 86th Street at Lyndale Avenue? Don't see any hands going up. Ms. Wilson? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought I talked over someone. I apologize. Ms. Wilson, if we could see if there's anyone on the line who wants to speak to the West 86th Street at Lyndale Avenue proposal.
Leia, do we have any callers that wish to speak to the council about West 86th at Lyndale Avenue?
And as a reminder, anyone who wants to speak on that agenda, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Still no one wishes to speak. Please continue.
Thank you.
All right. Then if we could move to the final project under consideration at, uh, West 106th Street at Decatur Avenue.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and councilmembers. I'm Paul Jarvis, traffic management coordinator. Uh, tonight we're talking about the intersection improvement at 106th and Decatur Avenue. Next slide, please. If you recall from last meeting, uh, we had some known issues on Decatur Curve. Uh, with the PMP project, we have the opportunity to address it, but the spot safety improvement, part of the overlay project. Uh, the goal of the project here is to reduce or eliminate crash problems at this intersection. Next slide. This is a kind of a brief synopsis of the, uh, actual crashes that we have. Uh, we have seven crashes that were either, uh, uh, state-reported or resident-reported. And if you look at the, kind of the, what's the crashes are, four of them were, uh, knee-bated drivers. Uh, all of them were, uh, run off the road and single-vehicle crashes. Uh, we have one reckless, uh, and two, uh, the crashes, we don't know what the, uh, uh, how the, uh, operators were. Uh, next slide, please. Here's a little quick look at kind of some of the previous, uh, improvements we've made to this over time. Uh, kind of in the 2015 timeframe, we added some curve warning signs, uh, at the curve for them. In, uh, uh, 2017, removed some of those curve warning, the Chevron signs, replaced them with, uh, we could see here in the, in the picture in the background, uh, some larger, uh, arrow signs. And also in 2017, we improved the street lighting at the interchange and did some trimming of the, uh, overhead trees. Next slide, please. Excuse me. And we're looking here at the, uh, the actual improvements we're proposing, and we're looking at, uh, some medians at the, uh, both entrances to the Decatur Curve. Uh, we've, in the past, if part of this project, we did look at some other type of improvements. Uh, the examples have been like curb bump outs or pedestrian crossings. These options may slow down, but they don't do, uh, they don't guide drivers as well as medians would. That's why we're, we're looking at the, the medians as a way of slowing down traffic and also giving good guidance, reinforcing the guidance that's already there. Uh, next slide. And here's the quick, uh, this would be the, uh, cross-section. Uh, we're looking at 16-foot drivelanes with the four-foot wide, uh, median. Uh, we picked the 16-foot wide drivelanes as we talked with, uh, Public Works on the, in the snowplows. The snowplows would, would like us to maintain 16 feet of clear for their new larger plows. And next slide. And right here is a little where we need to do some removal of, uh, the current parking, uh, on both sides of the median. Uh, the red line shows the maximum extent of the medians in practice. When we finally do build them, it'll most likely be a little bit shorter than this, these red lines. Next slide. I think Ms. Marone was going to take over part of this one. She has done most of the, uh, uh, citizen correspondence.
Yes. Um, so you'll, you would have noticed in your, um, council packet that we included all of the communications that we had received from residents. Um, we had a, a few residents that, that we had corresponded with quite a bit, uh, met with, uh, as well as spoken on the phone to try to address, um, concerns and questions. Um, many of the issues that were identified, uh, related to public on-street parking and the, the loss of, um, some public on-street parking if the medians are constructed, um, the visual look of the medians and concerns that they would, um, have a bit of an industrial look to them if added into a residential area. Um, there were some concerns noted with site obstructions, uh, the, the public process that was used, um, in the preparation of this spot safety concern. Um, they wanted to make sure that we weren't restricting driveway access in any final design, that plowing had been looked at, and just to confirm that other options had been considered. And, you know, we, we did, did our best to address the questions. Um, and we will, you know, as Paul mentioned in the parking, related to parking, we will do our best to m- Paul mentioned in the parking, related to parking, we will do our best to minimize any impacts to added restrictions for public on-street parking. But it is important to remember that public on-street parking in the right of way, we can remove that in locations where, if there is a safety concern. So at this point, we would not be proposing to remove parking along that curve. However, if a safety concern did arise with having vehicles parked in that area, it could potentially be restricted in the future. So, you know, we're trying to address all the questions and make sure that it is clear that in final design, all of these things are great issues that we will, that we will definitely keep in mind for the final design. But, sorry, there we go. But I think most importantly, we just wanted to point out that, so this, the curve at Decatur Curve at 106th Street, it is open and apparent, and the city has already met and exceeded the required obligations to warn drivers of the change in alignment with the warning signs that are in place at Decatur Curve. However, with the pattern of crashes that we were aware of, we felt that it was our obligation to identify any additional solutions that we could come up with to help address the clear pattern of crashes that, that we've noted that have occurred. There's no standard design or design guidelines to design for impaired drivers. And so this recommendation is our best recommendation and design to try to further improve the safety at this curve, and we do recommend construction of that. Based on the comments, I would say that one of the requests was that we consider not constructing the median on the Decatur leg of the intersection. And while we think that the medians do work best as a pair, because the intent of the medians is to guide, provide additional guidance to the drivers as they are entering and going through the curve, if only one of them was to be constructed, we definitely would, you know, place more, more concern and more recommendation on the one on the 106th Street leg, because that is the direction that all of the crashes have, that the crash pattern has, has demonstrated. And, oh my goodness, sorry about that. So we are definitely open to answering any questions about this proposal. Again, we were trying to keep it relatively short since we had gone through it previously, but wanted to just add additional comments and make sure that the council was aware of all the public comment that had been received. And at this point, our recommendation is still the construction of the two medians to be added into the overlay project, but this, we are open to discussion on this with the council.
Thank you for the presentation and catching us up with this. I see a couple of hands up already, I see Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And first off, thank you for, I really appreciate staff taking initiative to notice kind of a demonstrated pattern of issues here and trying to be proactive, even as the unique conditions slide notes here, we've kind of checked all the boxes on the city's needed side, but trying to kind of go above and beyond here for resident safety. I'm just kind of curious, the balance overall, when we see issues like this, especially considering that the preponderance of these crashes involve impaired drivers, do we see, let's see, how do I phrase this? Is it the typical approach that we would move forward when that pattern is demonstrated with infrastructure improvements on these streets in these areas, or just working with, say, entities like Bloomington Police Department to do stepped-up enforcement in some of these areas? I'm just curious how that, how that kind of decision-making lines up, and how many other areas of the city have we had to go above and beyond like this with no clear guidance because of impaired drivers consistently being a problem?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Martin, while I don't know all the history of all the locations, I can think of a couple other similar locations. And of course, we will always do, you know, make sure that all of this appropriate signage is in place, we always look at street lighting, any, any other non-infrastructure elements that we can address immediately when a concern is identified, we will always do that. I, I believe that another somewhat similar location that I had updated the council recently in a one-weekly, I would say the curve at, so it's a very similar situation with the curve, at the south end of Franz Avenue, where it turns to Overlook Drive. Some minor infrastructure improvements have been completed at that location many years ago. It is a, it is a very, well, I think it's called a surmountable median. So it was similar, where there were a lot of driveways along the curve, and so a median that could be driven over was constructed. Now, I don't, I don't know that we would build that again in the future, and I guess, you know, we'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis, but it has not completely eliminated the crashes because it is drive-over-able.
Mayor, if I may, just a quick follow-up.
Please.
So I guess these not being surmountable, is, is the placement of where they're at in the curve, if somebody were to continue on their street trajectory, they would be running into those medians to try and kind of help correct them? Because it does seem like they're a little ways back from where the curve is candid tightest.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Martin, so when we went into this, we knew that we wanted, that ideally we would have medians at the approach, the entrances to the curve, as well as throughout the curve. However, given the placement of the driveways and the spacing of the driveways through this curve, these are the only two locations within the curve where we can actually construct a median that would be meaningful and that we'd be able to maintain safe plow operations and keep it cleared and guarantee that we're not restricting access to, to driveways.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Councilmember Coulter?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, I have a few questions here, and I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about, you said, or said earlier that other options were considered for this 106th Street in Decatur. And I'm just, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about, a little bit more specifically about what those options were and why, why this, this was the option that was chosen?
Councilmember Coulter and Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll go first, and then Paul may be, may be able to add a little bit more, but, so another option that we did consider that would have been on this similar scope and level of doing the center medians, is we looked at if we would be able to impact drivers' speeds by narrowing the roadway enough with doing some curb bumpouts as you're approaching the curve. And it, we determined that while we, we could find a couple of places to build them, it seems like it would be more impactful and provide more positive guidance to the drivers to construct something in the center of the roadway, to help get the drivers on the right side as they're going around the curve, and also by putting something in the middle of the road provides an opportunity where we will be placing a "keep right" sign, and that can, is back even further and more, more in advance of the existing signage, just something else to help catch headlights and get attention to drivers. Seeing that in the middle of the road would be less expected, and, and hopefully more attention-getting than seeing it on the right-hand side of the road. I don't want to diminish the impacts of curb bumpouts, I think they have great, they are a great treatment at the right place, that's one that we looked at here. Another thing that we've looked at would be a much more expensive and higher level, and it is definitely not something that we have used very often, or resident, and residents typically aren't very happy with it, but just the adding some barrier. Paul, could you, could you help me out, I'm forgetting the word of the, the name of the...
You're looking for the chicanes that we were thinking about, the roadway chicanes, which are horizontal deflections of the driveline, maybe would be kind of like a bumpout that forces cars left or right on both sides. They are fair-to-cost prohibitive, and as we've looked at further developing the bumpouts and chicanes and other devices along 106th Street, we ran into some stormwater problems. And with the, this only being a PMP overlay project, that the cost of doing stormwater, stormwater mitigation and new crouch basins and new manholes was outside the scope of this project.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the other thing is still the, it's more of a, typically a highway treatment, but you can put up an actual barrier along the curb. However, with the number of driveway openings, again, along the outside edge of the curb, it would be an expensive treatment and has the potential to be not very effective with the driveway opening locations, and is something that's not a very appealing from a visual aesthetic treatment. So those are, those are three of the main ones that, that we looked at in addition to the center medians.
Thank you, that's helpful. I guess sort of taking a different tack with this, you know, obviously, you know, it's sort of been said that to a certain extent, impaired drivers are going to drive the way impaired drivers will drive. So I guess, you know, to the, to the best of your knowledge, what, what kind of expectations do we have as far as, you know, how much, how much medians like this would actually do? Like what, what kind of difference would this actually make? I mean, you know, obviously, there are a number of measures that have already been put there, I guess my, my question is, are we, are we approaching a point of diminishing returns here?
Councilmember Coulter, you know, I really don't have a factual answer, you know, that I can give for that one. We, a lot of, a lot of treatments, we can get a crash modification factor that goes along with them, as, as we've already said, and I think we're all viewing it this way with the understanding that these are very atypical crashes, even though they are the, almost the exact same crash that is happening, and the crash reports read very similar on all of them, so it is a pattern of a similar crash. I, I don't have any standard that I can reference and say if you add this to guide people through the cur, drive impaired, guide impaired drivers through the curve, that you will have this, this result. So unfortunately, it's a, it's a lot cleaner when we can come forward and say, say that. But in this case, this is something that we think would help improve, and, you know, it is, it's up to the council to make the decision on whether they think that this is something that is needed, or if it looks as though we have adequately addressed the concern in this area and we move on.
Thank you, that's, that's, I think that's helpful to know the, the process there. And I guess my, my, actually, you know what, I'll save my last question for, for later in the conversation, it's maybe more of a council-wide question than a staff question. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I just like to pick up on what you just said there, Ms. Maron, about whether or not it's needed, or if we've already adequately addressed the issue. And I was just looking at the data, and it looks like from what we have here, the last accident was, well, it looks like New Year's Day, so I'm assuming that was a New Year's Eve type of incident, in 2017, and then the city made some changes apparently later in 2017. And am I right in understanding there hasn't been a crash in that area of significance since those last changes were made?
Councilmember Nelson, I believe you're correct, without having, I can go back to the graphic, but yes, it is, that is definitely one way to look at it, that we could say there has been one crash in 2018 that did happen, and that was, that, that was added based on our last review of crashes, checking a different record source, since, yeah, our state crash reports were a little unreliable for that year. So we did check another source, so it looks like there was one additional in 2018 that would have occurred after the last modifications were completed in this area.
Okay, I appreciate that, that information, clarification for me. And I know that you've looked at a number of different things, I know one of the concerns that has been raised by many people in the area is the speed overall of particularly 106th-headed westbound there, but it seems like these accidents, in addition to possibly speed, have a component of the impaired driver component to it. Has there been discussions, or is there a conversation going on now to address the overall speed issues in that area?
Councilmember Nelson, you know, based on one of the conversations that we had with the residents, you know, we have a local street traffic calming program, and we would be more than happy to work through that process with the neighborhood to, you know, to, to consider speed tables or some other treatments to address speeds. That's a longer process than, than what we would have had time to implement at this time. Moving forward with the overlay project, with or without these center medians, either way would not prohibit us from moving forward with that other separate local street traffic calming program with the neighborhood, if that's something that was desired to be pursued. Another thing that we heard was a request for maybe putting a speed radar sign back out here again. The last time we had heard from someone in this neighborhood specifically about speeds, actually, it was the same resident that had submitted several comments in the packet that, that believes that the primary concern is the speeds. We had worked with him many years ago, I would say maybe 10 years ago, when he had brought up the issue of speeds, and we had put out, one of our very first speed radar signs was deployed on 106th Street at that time. We typically leave those in place for one to two years and then move them to a new location, but we could definitely look at re, redeploying that out in this on 106th Street, even if the neighborhood didn't, you know, lost, lost steam and interest in going through the local street traffic calming program, we still have a few other tools that we could implement, such as speed radar sign.
So I guess, you know, what I'm hearing is that there are some things we could look at to do regarding the speed, and I know earlier, I think, I forget who it was, it was Mr. Jarvis and Ms. Maron had mentioned, that one of the goals of this is to slow traffic down, and so, you know, part of what I'm wondering is, what is the downside of taking a little bit more time, looking at the options with regards to the speed, and, and thinking through this a little bit more with the neighborhood in order to maybe look at other options? And I appreciate that some options have been looked at, but I think, you know, it seems like one of the goals is the speed issue, and maybe it merits additional consideration on that respect, and that may address the crash issue later as well.
Councilmember Nelson, while I, while I understand the interest in trying to, you know, address both at the same time, you know, this was, this was just an identified crash location with a spot safety improvement, and so that, that was why we were moving forward on a shorter timeline. So, you know, we have a lot of locations where we will propose, you know, or we will just incorporate into the project, adding a center median extension or something. If it's not changing the function of the roadway, so like in this case, it's, it's a two-lane roadway, this is just a device that would reinforce the fact that it's a two-lane roadway. Sometimes we make those changes without any kind of neighborhood notification. The reason that we wanted to involve the neighborhood and provide an opportunity for feedback on this one is because it, it is at the section of the road where it goes from having no driveways to, to having driveways, and we wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for the residents to bring up any, any issues or concerns that they may have, that we would either, that would either be addressed at this point, when the council is considering whether to approve the installation of medians, or if it was approved, then we would definitely incorporate their comments into the final design of the medians, you know, such as the, the length and the plowability and, and all of those factors. So our local street traffic calming policy and, and program is, it's almost a full-year process to go through that. There's a big difference in the feedback that we get from all of the residents when we put in devices such as speed tables for trial devices that act, that you have to physically drive over every, every day going over them. And so for that process, it's a lot more meeting, device trial, and getting public feedback, and for the program... And, um, for the program currently, it, it does have a level of assessment to the residents. It's just a much more intensive, um, program that we are completely willing, you know, to go through with the, with the neighborhood. But it's not something that would fit into as a throw-in kind of project with the overlay that's planned here. And then, um, Julie Long is on, is able to respond as well, but I'll just say that, um, I, it sounds like we're, I, I apologize if it sounds like we're trying to push this, but we're really trying to not hold up the overlay. All, almost every road in this neighborhood is, is part of the overlay project for this year. And there's a lot of benefits to doing all of them in one project and not holding off this segment to come back at a later time. And I'm probably not the best to respond to that, but just for a big picture, but you can certainly ask Julie Long, um, if you would like a little bit more details about that.
Yeah, that makes, um, some sense in terms of the coordination of the entire project and things like that. I, um, now my question I have is, is there a reason to believe that impaired drivers won't just simply run into this median? When you put something in the middle of the road, um, uh, is there any reason or is there a way to understand that this would not be a risk for drivers?
Council member Nelson, we, we believe that, that it is less of a risk than, than the current trend that has been shown. But again, like I, I am not claiming that we're, you know, looking at a design manual and saying, oh yeah, um, impaired drivers can navigate this. So I, I don't want to overstep the claims on this. This is our, this was just, this is our best recommendation on if we're going to try to address this spot safety concern. This is the treatment we would recommend.
And, and part of the reason I asked that, and this isn't related to a median, but I know that there are now some, um, uh, poles in the middle of Old Shakopee Road just to the east of France Avenue. And I know when they first went in there, um, and I understand that's a probably a pedestrian refuge area, trying to create some protection for crossing a very busy road, which, which makes sense. But, uh, it surprised me the first time and, uh, I didn't realize I had to kind of navigate around them. Um, I didn't hit them, so just to be clear. So, and I wasn't prepared either. So just to be clear on both points. But, um, I, I, you know, that, that is one of the concerns that I have is that this may be more of an issue than, than the solution, uh, to the problem that, that currently exists. One of the, uh, the other concerns that I've heard is because there isn't that final design on this project, that people don't really know what is being approved here. Can you, I know you addressed this a little bit, but can you talk to that a little bit more of, of how that process works? Is this final approval at this point? Will there be another, uh, time that this is before the council with, um, additional details? Um, for another checkoff, I think I'd heard that there might be, that this may be priced in as an alternate and, um, which would allow for continued conversation with the neighborhood, but also for people to really see what it is and make that approval based on the final decision? Or am I not understanding the process?
Council member Nelson, um, that's a very good question. So what we're bringing is the concept of, does the council approve the concept of constructing center medians at this location for the goal stated? Um, we do not typically bring the final design, um, to the council for approval. If it's something that you really have a desire in seeing, I'm sure, I'm sure there, we could provide it to you via one weekly or some other means. The council will be asked to order the overlay project. And depending on the decision tonight, um, this element would be included in the overlay project or not that you're asked to order. And I, I believe it may even be at the next council meeting that you're going to be asked to order that project. But I, again, um, I'm a little less, um, familiar with the details of ordering of the actual overlay project. Um, and even when you do order the project, I don't believe that you usually have access to the, the plan set. And so the design details are typically something that's left to the infrastructure designers. And we will incorporate all of the comments that we've received to, to come up with the best final design. But it's not something where we typically take the design to the public for comment.
Thank you for the clarification. Um, my last question, uh, just, um, there was a, uh, some improvements made on a street in my neighborhood, um, I believe due to speed, but that was probably most likely due to the fact that there's a high school and probably some young teen drivers there. So hopefully a slightly different situation than this. But in looking at what the options were for that, they, um, actually, uh, uh, I don't know who, but put out some temporary, um, items in there. And I think they created like a temporary roundabout in the area. Has, is that something that can be done so people can see how this works? If it really works, we can get maybe some more feedback from the neighborhood that this, this actually works better than they are anticipating? Or it works worse than the city's anticipating? Or is that an option?
Council member Nelson, that's a great question. So I think what you're talking about is, uh, the intersection of, uh, Morris and 100.
100 Hills.
Yep, thank you. And yeah, that was actually an intersection control problem. So a right of way, assignment of right of way at an offset, um, for like an intersection. And so you're correct, we did do, um, uh, we did a device trial where we put in, uh, traffic circle. And there were many elements to why we did a device trial. Um, one of them is the fact that it was such an offset intersection. And, and what we ended up with is figuring out that the traffic circle was not going to work to help assign the right of way at that location. Um, and, and ended up with a completely different design where we turned it into two offset T intersections instead. Um, it's, it was different than here. So while a trial could definitely be done, um, I, I don't recommend it because I don't think that, um, we're going to be able to, there's, there's not, um, a clear set of what we're trying to accomplish by doing a device trial with a median at this location. So we wouldn't be trying to see if the powders can get around it or buses can get around it. Um, we'd have no way to measure, um, you know, the, the crashes. We, we wouldn't leave a device trial in place until we see if there's a crash or not. So the things that we would be wanting to make sure work okay and on a measurable timeline are things that we can check in other ways. So for instance, um, making sure that we maintain full access to the driveways. We can check that with, um, a, a program called Auto Turn. And so we do simulations, um, with different sized medians or different length medians and make sure that all vehicles can turn safely in and out of the driveways. So the kind of things that we would be testing, I don't think, um, we would, I, I don't recommend a device trial as the most efficient way to do that.
Okay.
That is not, not to say that it couldn't be done, but that, that, that's where we landed. Thank you.
I appreciate the feedback and, um, I'll have some more comments later, but I'll, I'll allow others to ask questions. So thank you.
Council member Colter, additional questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, council member Nelson's line of questioning led me back to the, the question that I left off at the end there. And I, I think it actually is best to ask it now. And I guess, um, so in the conversation that I, I had with a resident, there was reference made to a sort of petition process, I think through the traffic calming policies that the city has, or essentially removal of, of measures that are put in place. And, you know, recognizing this is not, this was not, this would not go through that traffic calming process that you referred to earlier. Would that, would that same process then not apply to this? So if this, let me phrase that differently. If this project moves forward and those medians get put in, is there a, a process by which residents can petition to have them removed after the fact?
Council member Colter, that's an excellent question. Um, you're right, it, it would probably not fall under that. I think the specific one you're referencing is, yeah, it's been a while since I've looked at that specific petition related to the removal of devices that were installed based on the local street traffic calming program. So just the clarification is the local street traffic calming program is, um, it's a program that's designed for residents to take advantage of. If, um, city staff, um, is, hasn't prioritized a location for improvement, but they really feel strongly that there is a speeding or a cut through problem that they really think is affecting their livability and they want to petition their neighbors and get everyone to sign and say, we really want this device installed. We go through a pretty intensive program with trial devices. And then again, another survey, and if they, uh, 60% of the affected properties agree that this is so worth it and we want to pay for this, um, then we would prepare a project and they would pay a portion of the installation fees. And then at the end of that policy is, uh, is, as you mentioned, the, the special policy on how to then remove it if, uh, everybody changes their mind and say that this is not something that they want. Residents, I believe, always have the right to submit a petition for, for any type of thing like this. I, I don't know of anything that would stop residents from being able to a, appeal later if this posed a problem. That, I'm sorry, that was not a very clean answer to your question, but I really am not aware of anything that would stop somebody from being able to submit a petition for removal in the future if, if it really caused a problem that, that nobody anticipated or that we didn't anticipate.
Well, that's okay. It wasn't a very clean question. So thank you. Um, but I, I guess, it, it just, it seems to me that there, there are just a lot of unknowns here. And I, I think that's frankly where, you know, that what I've been hearing from residents, that's where the concern arises. Um, and it, it just, it based on kind of how you responded to the, the questions that councilwoman Nelson asked. I'm, I'm, I, I guess I'm, I'm just unclear as to sort of what level of specificity. I mean, I, you know, the, this one in particular, because it is entirely within a residential area, the way, in a way that the other two proposals really are not. You know, what, I mean, is there, you know, beyond sort of what we're talking about here tonight? And then I think you said maybe in our next meeting, we're going to be over, we're going to be asked to order the overlay. And so I'm, I guess I'm just wondering what, you know, what level of specificity here are we giving to the public? To, you know, to residents in the area as far as, um, you know, specifically how this will affect them. Because I, the sense I get is that a lot of folks are essentially saying, well, because we don't really know, I don't want to do it. So that, that was a very roundabout way of asking if you have any thoughts on that.
Council member Colter, you, you know, I guess my, my thought is that a center median is not a new, it's not a new treatment, it's not a new concept. They can be seen on, at any road, you know, if you go a half a mile away from this location, you'll see center medians. We don't think that this is something that is changing the function of the road. It's not changing the number of lanes in each direction. It is simply something that would provide a little bit more guidance to drivers as they are approaching and entering the curve. And, and while I understand that we did receive, that you did receive a lot of comments on this and a lot of concerns about the details, and we, you know, we can certainly prepare what those plans would look like. Plan, um, plan sheets are not easily readable by the public. And, and I know that there, you know, there are people with very different backgrounds that, that could be looking at it and it could make total sense to some people, but the general public, um, a concept plan and examples are, are usually as effective as seeing a final design would be for that. And so while I, I hear the concerns that have been raised about not knowing what this will look like, I, I'm unaware of how we could address that other than saying, um, giving some photo examples of other center medians. And I have a couple in some supplemental slides if, if there's an interest in bringing that up. But I mean, we, we use center median treatments throughout the city for various purposes, including in some in residential areas very similar to this.
Thank you. And I, to be clear, I certainly was not advocating, you know, design specs and, and that kind of thing. I think you're exactly right that, that, you know, a lot of folks would look at that and not understand that. No, I, I, um, I, I think you have done, I think you've done your job as well. I want to be clear about that. I think you've done your job as well. I think the question before us is, is, uh, how to balance what you've brought forward to us and what we're hearing from the community. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Council, any additional questions or comments on this? If not, I'm pretty confident that we have folks on the line who would like to offer some public comments on this. Uh, Ms. Wilson, can you help us out?
Leah, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a caller on the line by the name of Chris Mavis?
Yes, ma'am. I do see his name.
He had registered in advance to speak. Could you please unmute his mic and patch him through?
Will do. One moment, please. And then, Mr. Mavis, please go ahead. Your line is open.
Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Mavis. Welcome. Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Good evening. Welcome. Thanks for, uh, your patience waiting for us. Uh, we, we set aside time this evening for this very thing, uh, the public comment on this. So, uh, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, um, I'm going to try to keep my comments at least to around three minutes, but I may go over a little bit and I ask your indulgence on that. So if I may proceed.
Please do.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My wife Shannon and I have lived at 8400 West 106th Street for over 20 years. We appreciate council members' questions tonight and wish that the robust discussion tonight would have happened with our neighborhood a long time ago. My later comments will relate directly to that wish and it's unfortunate that the city hasn't really engaged with our neighborhood like this before. So I'm really here tonight for two things. The first is to verbally affirm our objection to the proposed medians at 106th Street in Decatur. The fact that there is already significant neighborhood resistance and comments stating that these devices will not help with respect to impaired driving. And further, the only communication the city has actively given to us was a letter containing a two-day notice for public comment. All other communication was the neighborhood trying to react and reach out regarding this project timeframe and the devices. As in, there was no two-way engaged communication. In short, to hurry up a project to meet the PMP program is not an excuse to not do something right. A PMP program is intended to prioritize roadway work. Therefore, the city knew at least two years ago that our neighborhood was going to be due for an overlay and a compressed design period should be a non-starter. I ask council to rethink rushing a project to meet a budget. The second thing that I'm here for is to speak about Bloomington policies and the fact that the city is playing by a different set of rules, forcing an ill-conceived solution on our neighborhood in a compressed timeframe and walking all over the very definition of participatory government. The city says that these are spot safety improvements. The U.S. Department of Transportation defines these types of the safety improvements as traffic calming devices, which leads me to the city policy on traffic calming. The project should have been placed under this policy over a year ago because of the knowledge of the PMP program by the city before design because it naturally falls into that policy document. This project involves local streets as defined by the city. The city has published a policy and procedure manual related to traffic calming on local streets. The policy specifies the entire procedure related to neighborhood traffic calming in states in part. Implementation of traffic calming for Bloomington local streets will be in accordance with the procedures set forth in this document. This policy document is the only thing that residents have to ensure a process that has integrity. The city may claim that this is a city-initiated project under pressure. However, why did the city deviate from an already existing public policy? Does the city have a documented internal process for city-initiated traffic calming like this? Was that process followed? Are there differences between the published policy and the internal process? If there are, what are the differences and why are there differences? If the answers to any of that exist, Why are there differences? If the answers to any of that exist, can we see the documentation? The city says that they can do anything in the roadway that they want. The question to council is whether the sh- city should be doing that, given the public policy and specifically with respect to submitted comments for this project. What I am saying is, if the council does not make a different process transparent to the public before council approval, the default position for the city should be to follow the policy that they have made available to the public, the traffic calming policy. There was a reason for the policy to be created and adopted, and I appreciate that, as the policy gives residents a petition process to remove traffic calming devices such as these, which has been confirmed by the city attorney today. This removal process seems to be the only option for residents to get the city to actually listen to us. And again, that's unfortunate. All the neighborhood wants is to have an in-depth conversation with the city that would certainly be longer than the eighteen days that we've been given. But the city has chosen a vastly different path, and this has caused a real concern. Therefore, we are asking council to vote no on the median proposal at a hundred and sixth in Decatur. And we're going to leave you with this last statement. This should not be city versus resident. The city can do better than this and make this right with the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
And thank you for your comments. Ms. Wilson, do we have others?
Leah, do we have other callers that wish to speak on the proposed project at West one hundred and sixth street in Decatur Avenue?
Once again, whoever wants to speak on that agenda, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And we have Joanne Link. Ma'am, your line is open. Please go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to listen with me. I am one of the people, as well as Mr. and Mrs. Mavis, that have commented in the past about the speed on a hundred and sixth street and the crashes at, uh, Decatur Avenue. The council members and the mayor have addressed and in their questions several of my concerns, which I appreciate you guys recognizing them and having read obviously our comments. But I, I want to kind of stress, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, the agenda packet and item number, page number one seventy-eight, which seems to kind of minimize or not certainly, um, clearly lay out at least our concerns that have been summarized, I think, in several emails. I do have, I think the medians will in fact change the function of the road. I think it'll change the function of the neighborhood, albeit in a somewhat focused area. I am concerned, as the council members have mentioned, about people hitting the median. The city has said that, um, they consider this area to be open and that, but they can't address impaired drivers. I don't know how a median with or without key bright signs or other signage will make a difference with impaired drivers. I do think that medians and signage will affect property values, will affect parking, will affect how people drive through the neighborhood and how they can walk in the neighborhood, ingress and egress to the driveways, the signs on the medians causing visual obstructions for going in and out of the driveways and around the curves. We have a lot of walkers and bikers in the area. And if my voice sounds nervous, it is because I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize. But, um, we have mailbox access. We have, uh, as an association, we place our garbage and recycle bins at the curb. All of that will be limited and restricted. I feel the safety of going into the roadway will be impacted, particularly in the winter when I can't cross over a snowbank to get to my mailbox, that I have to, uh, walk from driveway to another driveway. Uh, if people get impatient with other people, um, in the single lane, kind of backing up gar- garbage trucks, utility trucks, uh, other, you know, delivery vehicles, postal vehicles, will they attempt to go around these medians and drive on the other side of the road? I went for a walk the other day and somebody courteously went to the other side of the road to clearly avoid me. Um, and this was not even at the curve. I think really the key to me to some degree is, which I'm confused by, there's no reduced speed limit sign at the curve. Um, if you look at the packet that I sent, um, there's a link to a URL that a neighbor helped me create and it is a video of the area and it, it clearly shows that it's a, it's kind of a visual trap. And the medians will be right in that visual trap and prior to the median, there's no be- reduced speed limit. It's thirty miles per hour. Many years ago, it was fifteen miles per hour. Granted, that speed sign, I have a picture in, with one of my emails, the speed sign was buried in some trees, but at least there was an attempt to tell people to reduce the speed. Now, the city might say again, impaired drivers, what can we, what can you do? I agree. You can't bubble wrap the world. And I don't think though, that I'm confident, even if this is or isn't a final proposal, the medians of any way, shape or form, where they're being proposed, as the city has says, typically result in driver speed, not certain what the result will be. The downsides are so much greater than the, um, speculated upside. I would like to see something done. I think a hundred and sixth street needs to slow down. I think we need more lighting in the area. I definitely think we need a reduced speed limit sign. Um, and an advanced curve sign. There's the arrow sign, but none of that is in advance of the curve. Everything is at the apex of the curve. And so I just strongly encourage, if you haven't already done so, to perhaps look at the URL and take a ride along with us as we're entering into the curve and see really if some, some measures like that would at least help resolve the issue. I certainly don't think that the medians will resolve the issue. There'll be just one more thing that drunk drivers will run into ev- as we've seen at other places. And I know I'm taking a lot of time, but we've mentioned that there's medians in other neighborhoods. I'd like to see a median in a neighborhood that's a multifamily, high-density dwelling neighborhood as ours, because the pictures that were shown in the agenda, those parcels are, are huge parcel lots. It doesn't appear that there's any need for parking on the roads where the medians are. It doesn't appear that there's any need to avoid, uh, putting out recycling and garbage bins. So all in all, I'm kind of going on, but I wanted to, um, express my concern and my objection to the medians. Thank you for your time.
And thank you very much for your comments.
Leah, do we have other callers that wish to speak on this proposed project?
Yes, ma'am. We do have Jessica Van Sickle. Ma'am, your line is open. Please go ahead.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Uh, uh, thank you. Um, good evening. My, uh, mayor, uh, council members and city staff, um, I am Jessica Van Sickle and I am the president of the West Park Hills Homestead Association, um, that is located at the corner and north of one hundred and sixth and Decatur Avenue. Um, and I'm calling in, um, I did submit some written, um, comments and feedback from our homeowners, um, but I'm calling in tonight just to, you know, kind of reiterate that feedback, um, as well as, you know, echo a lot of what Joanne, um, had just, um, had just said. Um, uh, but particularly, um, uh, in reference to the parking restrictions, um, I know that the intent at this point is to restrict parking just on either side of the median. Um, and while that might seem, um, minimal, um, with the way that our, uh, units are, um, situated and the quads are, um, developed and with the shared driveways and such, um, even just the, um, limited parking on either side of the median, that will affect, um, at minimum ten to twelve different families. Um, now, do ten to twelve different families park on the street at any given time? No. But, uh, particularly in the summertime, you have a lot more, um, activity going on. You have, um, you know, landscaping and grounds on, on, um, site, working within the area and visitors coming. Um, we do see a lot more, uh, parking within the community on the street. Um, and if, um, that parking is limited, you know, we're just having to push down further down the street, um, taking up additional parking, um, in front of other people's homes. Um, so that is, that is a concern for us. Um, also, um, I think it was mentioned, um, I think Amy responded already, um, there were concerns with, you know, turning in and out of the driveways and whether there would be enough clearance, particularly with, you know, being able to turn in and out with like a trailer, as an example. Um, we have some homeowners that, you know, do hauling in and out of their homes and, and just making sure that there's consideration made, um, for those types of things. Um, but ultimately, at the end of the day, those are concerns with the medians in place. Um, but to, um, echo what both, uh, Chris and Joanne has said, um, we don't, we don't think that the medians address that the root of the issue, the root of the issue is the speed along a hundred and sixth street. Um, and, and, you know, I'm not going to repeat what they've already said, impaired drivers. I agree completely with they, what they've said. But, um, you know, as, uh, the representative of the association, you know, all of the accidents that are on record, um, at this corner, um, have been, um, a safety issue for the residents of our association. And I don't take that lightly. I certainly want our homeowners to feel safe and I don't want to turn away, um, safety measures that make sense. Um, and that's why I just want, I, I urge the council to think about what makes sense for the corner. Um, I don't think that the medians right now at this time make sense. I certainly don't think that, um, the median at Decatur Avenue makes sense. There's never, there's never been, as far as I understand, there's the, um, most of the issues are coming from a hundred and sixth street and we know that those, uh, issues seem to be, um, caused by speed and impaired drivers. Um, so I will, uh, leave you with that. And, um, if you have, uh, any questions for me or, uh, would like any additional follow-up from myself or the homeowners, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Sickle. Appreciate it. Ms. Wilson?
Leah, do we have any additional callers for this agenda item, the West one hundred and sixth street proposed project?
Once again, anyone who wishes to speak on that agenda, please press star one on your telephone keypad. I'm sure we know one wishes to speak at this time. Please continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, counsel, we said we would, uh, take public comment on this and we, we certainly did. Uh, we heard, uh, an extensive staff report on this. We had plenty of time to ask questions and, and, uh, kind of frame this or shape this in your minds and, uh, get a direction, I think, uh, pointed in one way or another. So, um, counsel, I, I ask, we ultimately need to make a decision here on all three of these, um, these proposals as part of the pavement management program, knowing that we can, uh, as, just as cleanly we can make the motion to not include all three if we, if we so choose. So, comments, questions, direction here, counsel? Councilmember Coulter and Councilmember Martin, you, you raised your hand at almost the exact time and I'm afraid if I call on one of you, the other is going to say, no, he, he was in first. So, and Councilmember Nelson. So let's start. Okay, we're going to go, uh, alphabetically. Councilmember Coulter, Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and actually, the, the first thing I wanted to ask actually speaks exactly to what you just mentioned. And I, I guess I'm curious from, from a, a process point of view, what would be the, the, from staff's perspective, what would be the preferred way of going about this? Do we want to approve projects individually or as a group? Or, or how would staff prefer we go ahead with this?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, uh, I think the cleanest way is just to make one motion. And if there are any of these spot improvements that you wish to exclude, is you simply do not include them in the motion.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful for me to know. Um, so I will go ahead and make a few comments here. And, and, um, I, I've spent some time, more time frankly than I expected to thinking about this. And, um, I, I always try to come into these meetings with an open mind with, um, you know, being, being able to, to hear new information and ask new questions as things come up. And where I am at have, you know, I'm sure if we, if we talked more, I, I might end up at a different spot. But where I'm at right now, um, I, I can support the, the recommendations for American Boulevard, uh, and for eighty-sixth street. I think both of those may make a lot of sense. Um, but I, I am just not comfortable with moving forward with the, the medians at, at a hundred and sixth in Decatur. And I, I hope I don't sound like I'm unnecessarily repeating myself here, but I, I think staff did a really good job from a technical perspective. Um, you know, your, your worst guess is far better than my best guess. Uh, I will freely concede that. Um, I just, it, it just feels to me like there are a lot of unknowns. And, you know, having, having heard the, the concerns that, you know, the, the neighbors have addressed or have raised, I, I haven't really heard them addressed. And I, you know, I think we, we've talked about some other options. Um, you know, obviously I'm not suggesting we go with anything that's drastically more expensive, but we've talked about other options, including speed limit changes and, and enforcement changes and things like that, that may well accomplish substantially the same goal as, as what the medians would, are there to do, would be there to do. And I, I think a lot of what this comes down to is folks just feeling surprised and, and not in a good way, not in a way that they like. And, um, I, I think it, we, you know, I, I understand staff was, you know, came forward with these as, as these sort of spot safety improvements. I, I recognize the approach that was taken and, and, um, but I, I think that was just not the, the correct approach for this particular proposal because it is in such a substantially residential area. And I, I think there, there just needed to be a little bit more proactive engagement on the front end of this. And, you know, had that happened, minds may well have been changed. Um, and, you know, were, were the possibility of, of continued conversation realistic, minds may well have been changed. Um, but I, I think it, it's just the, the combination of, for me, those unknowns that I mentioned earlier, that, that, you know, again, this, I believe that this is staff's best guess, but there are just still a lot of unknowns. And I think the combination of those unknowns and the, the concerns that the neighbors in the area have brought forward, um, I'm, I am just not, if we have to make a decision, whether it's tonight or, you know, next week, I don't know that, that anything is going to change substantially between now and then. Um, I'm, I'm just not comfortable moving forward with the, the medians at a hundred and sixth in Decatur.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, yeah, just, uh, briefly, uh, overall, I, I agree. I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with the first, uh, two projects on this list. But I, I think it's also helpful kind of taking a half step back. And again, I, I appreciate the staff work on this. Uh, because it comes down to it, staff is going to be doing a project in the area. We asked staff to be efficient. They said, you know what, here's a good way to, uh, knock out two birds, one stone. Uh, and while we don't have clear guidance on this, it's a way to try and boost safety for the neighborhood. I mean, as we, we've seen in the staff report, people sliding off the roads, running into trees. Um, one of, one of the neighbors had a car end up in their basement. So I think it is totally proven that we'd be looking, uh, to try and do some of these safety improvements, um, when we can. Uh, I guess overall, I, I also am not terribly disturbed by the process um, around this. Uh, granted, I, I do think, uh, and I've mentioned before in the past, do we expand out, say, notification areas? I know over around three hundred residents got that letter. And could we have given folks a little more notice? Absolutely. Uh, something to think about and keep in mind for next time. Uh, but, uh, city council meetings for the entire history of this community have been opportunities, uh, for folks to come forward with issues that they're concerned about. Uh, in this case, folks were concerned that they didn't have enough time. So council said, okay, let's put this off so we can solicit more feedback. Feedback I found very valuable in my email inbox over the past week and a half or so. And tonight, uh, folks had the opportunity to, to share their thoughts with us, to reiterate some of those concerns and provide more perspective. Um, i- in the future, obviously, we have a whole suite of, of platforms. Let's talk Bloomington, which I know was included on that letter, uh, and more. So I look forward to continuing to improve. Uh, but I also just want to underscore the fact that it, it's because of a meeting where we take public comment, uh, in, in order to include that in our thinking, uh, that I know I am probably not going to be supporting the, the third project here. Um, and as Councilmember Coulter reiterated- Um, and as Councilmember Coulter reiterated, um, I, I, I think it's just because of kind of that, that uncertain nature, uh, the unique circumstances around this, uh, location. Uh, I think the fact that we're not able to do in a practical way that median kind of all the way along the curb, so it seems like it amounts to just kind of more signage and, and hoping signage in the middle of the street will be, uh, what makes kind of the deciding difference opposed to anywhere else. Uh, but overall, yeah, I, I think it's just important to, to keep in mind that this certainly isn't the city going to war with residents or, or anything like that. It's just, uh, staff taking initiative, uh, seeing an opportunity for potentially, uh, improving public safety in an efficient way, lining up projects, uh, and us having a conversation with the neighborhood about their concerns. It, it seems like, uh, local government in action. So just try and be iterative and continue to improve on giving folks more time as we move forward down the line.
Councilmember Nelson, then I see Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Loman as well. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, before I get to my comments on the third one, I do actually have a question on the eighty-sixth street one. Um, and just quickly, is anything that is in the Lindale Avenue retrofit plan, uh, thinking and looking to the future impacting the decision that we'd make on that tonight? Um, is, I guess, is it compatible with the vision for that street?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, so as far as we can tell, um, it is consistent with that vision. In fact, the, the retrofit plan sort of speaks to this vision. Now, in terms of how traffic volumes will change in the area, we don't have as much certainty on that, um, because it is a land use plan and we haven't gone through the exercise now of taking that and factoring it into our road network. Um, but there's nothing in the plan right now that says we should not do this. Um, and when I say that, um, there is some uncertainty, but we're looking twenty years out into the future. Um, but I do believe based on the projections that we have now, based on the work that we've done, that the change we have proposed is viable out to twenty years.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And just quick clarification, something popped into my head. This is a re, that portion is a restriping. There isn't any, um, changes or to the actual road? Is that accurate?
Councilmember Nelson, I, I, there's no changes to the curb line or the prism or the width of the road, so no, we won't be expanding out the width or anything like that. I think that is the question you're asking.
That is, yeah. Thank you for understanding what I'm trying to ask. Appreciate it. Um, and then moving to the hundred and stric- sixth street at Decatur one, um, I'd also like to echo my thanks to staff for, uh, taking a look at what is, you know, obviously a, a legitimate issue and a legitimate problem there. I mean, we have, uh, crash reports of car verse house and car verse tree and, um, you know, uh, things of that nature. And looking for a solution to that is, is extremely important for our community. Um, I, um, at this point, w- would probably not support this portion of the, of, uh, the spot improvement program, uh, but I would encourage, uh, continued dialogue because I think that a lot of issues have been raised in terms of the speed. I mean, clearly, as I just noted, that there is an issue there, there have been crashes. I'm glad to see that, you know, maybe it looks like they've decreased since some of the last signage has gone in there, um, and taking a look at what we might do. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, uh, Mayor, I think this may fit into something that you've talked about in the past in terms of speed limits in residential areas, in terms of how we address some of these, because, you know, I'll be honest, this hundred and sixth street is not the only street in my district that I get a lot of feedback on about speeding and safety and things like that. I mean, at Auto Club, Nesbit, one hundred and tenth, um, you know, I hear it throughout the area on residential streets, uh, that get used for cut-throughs, that have these high traffic. And, and, you know, I heard a number of things here in terms of speed limit lighting, advanced signage, um, things of that. And I know we've talked as a council in the past about sort of looking at that toolbox of options we have to address this, uh, concern throughout the community. And I, I frankly think this might, uh, be an area we can start to do something, um, and, and start to build out some of those. And, um, again, I just, I, I think staff did a great job of what they were asked to do, of, of coming up with a solution for this problem there. And I think this, you know, uh, I just think the issue is a little bit slightly bigger and different than that and, and takes, um, and merits some additional time and consideration there. But I, I, I hope, uh, if this doesn't move forward, that it isn't the end of the conversation with that neighborhood, um, and that we continue to look at those concerns there.
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of quick questions. Um, I just want to make sure I understand the impact. So if we do not approve project number three, uh, the medians, um, does it still make sense to move forward with the PMP project and also a neighborhood calming project, working with the residents to address the issues, the speed concerns on one hundred and sixth?
Councilmember Carter, I, I believe that, um, yes, it does still make sense to move forward with the, the overlay project for one hundred and sixth street. That's the pavement rehabilitation and it's at a critical point where if, if that does, does get extended and it doesn't happen soon, then it could turn into a reconstruction project and then those are assessed to residents as well. Um, and the, what was the other part of your question? I'm sorry.
Um, uh, does it still, can we still move forward with a pretty robust neighborhood traffic calming effort?
Councilmember Carter, yes. We, so we do have an application process for that, that the neigh- for the neighborhood to apply through. So we have, uh, the contact information now of the three main people who have commented at this meeting and we can follow up with them with additional information about how to initiate that, um, program, if that's something that they're interested in.
Okay. And so, um, to Mr. Mavis's comments, um, and his questions around our policies, so I do see we have a traffic calming for neighborhood, Bloomington neighborhoods, local streets on our website. Um, and then we also have a webpage that has local street traffic management program. Um, and it says that, you know, two, I think it says two, each year, two projects will be chosen from all the applications received. So those are the same projects, right? They're talking about the same effort.
That's correct. That's the same program, yes.
Okay. So do we have, um, any way for the council or residents to initiate traffic calming projects, um, where be- because there are areas that are dangerous that do not get assessed to res- to residents? Like that, that they don't have to go through the application process? It doesn't get assessed to them? Or is it, um, is this really the only route for people who have concerns?
So, Councilmember Carter, that's where we're, so this, because this was a staff, uh, like a staff identified location, that's why we were coming forward with our proposed, what the infrastructure improvement is that we think would address this, that would be not assessed to the neighborhood. Um, uh, other items, I guess we'll have, we can approach the council, um, to investigate that further, depending on what is requested.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I do know, uh, this has been an area of concern for a long time. And so I, I do wish that, um, we had had a more robust neighborhood engagement process on this, just knowing that it's been an ongoing issue and that, um, people have been raising the, the concerns about speed on one hundred and sixth for years. You know, with that, I do really thank staff, um, for all of the work that you've done and for initiating this, knowing that it's a problem area. I also want to thank the residents for, for being so engaged and, um, participating in this, this public hearing and for all of the emails that were sent. Um, you know, related to this conversation, uh, you know, I would welcome a more robust conversation on how we address neighborhood calming projects, um, whether they're city or city council or neighborhood initiated. And, um, I, if I recall right, when we were having the budget conversations, um, this was a program that maybe wasn't as heavily utilized or the, I, I, I'm not sure if it was the same one, but if I recall correctly. Um, so anyways, I, I guess my, my comments, I'm definitely supportive of the first two projects, um, but I'm not comfortable supporting the third project moving forward based on, um, neighborhood concerns and the fact that I, I would like to see us do more to address the speed issues on one hundred and sixth. Um, so I hope that the neighborhood, the neighbors stay engaged and, and we can figure out a path forward on that.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I can count noses. Uh, it's pretty clear to me kind of where we're at with this. Uh, certainly I, I trust, uh, staff's opinion, um, in terms of what you've put forward. Uh, however, I, you know, I hear the rest of my council member colleagues and the neighborhood. Um, and the, the, the big difference I'm seeing, uh, between that is one's paid for, one's not. And I, I can't, I don't want to comment on, uh, policy pieces. I'm going to comment on that in, uh, our policy update, uh, piece later on. Um, but, uh, uh, with that being said, I, I think we're, Mayor, probably at the point where we can go ahead and put a motion forward. I'd be happy to do that.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Loman. Uh, I will, because I know that, um, Councilmember Beloga switched to telephone only. He was having connection issues and I don't know that I can see a hand from him, so I just want to make sure. Councilmember Beloga, do you have anything you'd like to add to the comments or the discussion this evening? I will take that as a no, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
There we have you. Yes. Yes, we, we do hear you now.
I hear you now. Okay, thank you for checking in. Yes, I'm quite frustrated with technology, but, uh, I've, I've been able to, uh, listen and, uh, all the questions that I've had have already been answered, so I'll take a pass. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Loman, if, uh, if you think, uh, a motion is in order, I think now would be the time. I, I do want to say, I, I, I mean, I echo all that's been said. I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I think it's, uh, it, it was a good staff project. Uh, it probably could have been a little better communicated. I think, uh, I, I applaud the residents for the response that they, uh, they came with and, and the information that they passed on to us. And, and ultimately we got to a, a position here where I think the, the city is in, in agreement with the neighbors, that we, we agree with the first two and, and the one hundred and sixth street medians at Decatur Avenue just don't seem to be comfortable at this time. And, um, couldn't agree more with, uh, the comments that were made about, we need to find a way to slow down traffic, not just on one hundred and sixth street, but across many, many parts of the city. And, and I've made that comment before. So, Councilmember Loman, would you like to make a motion now?
Sure, Mayor. I'll move to, uh, approve the staff recommended, uh, spot transportation safety improvements to be implemented, uh, into the twenty twenty-one PMP project. Uh, these spot safety improvements include American Boulevard strip modification and pedestrian crosswalk enhancements, enhancements at Normandale Lake Boulevard and West eighty-sixth Street striping modifications at Lindale Avenue.
Second, Mayor?
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Martin to, uh, accept item eight point one and the two of the three pavement management program spot safety improvement projects, uh, excluding the West one hundred and sixth street medians at Decatur Avenue. Everybody clear on that? Any further discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Again, thanks, uh, thanks to the, to the neighborhood for your input on this. Thanks to the staff for this and, uh, I'm glad we were able to, to get to this point. And, uh, I mean, I, I, I will say it, it worries me to hear, uh, verbiage like the city at war with the residents here. I don't think that type of characterization is helpful in any way, shape or form. This was put forward as a proposed project. The neighborhood disagreed. We talked about this for a few weeks, a couple of times, uh, uh, here at the council, had an opportunity for, for neighborhood input and, and got a ton of emails and we came to this decision. I mean, that's, that's not a, a city at war with a neighborhood. That's, that's a city making a decision as, as we should be making a decision with the input from the residents, which, uh, and then coming to the conclusions which are best for not only in the neighborhood, but for the city at large. So, um, I, I think we just need to be careful with, uh, with the rhetoric around things like that. We can, we can disagree. We don't need to, uh, characterize it as, as the city at war with the neighborhood. So, because that's not the case at all. So with that, we will move on in our agenda. Item eight point two, our public safety answering point, service assessment final report. This was, uh, one of the, uh, service assessments that we have been doing over the past couple of years and looking at, um, the public safety answering point. Uh, also, I think, I think we can call it the dispatch center if I'm, if I'm not cutting it too close there. I'm sure the chief will correct me if I'm wrong. But, uh, Chief Mike Hartley is going to, uh, give us a, an overview of what the service assessment report found. No action on this one tonight. This is just more of an informational, uh, informational item. And, uh, welcome back, Chief Hartley. Thanks for sticking with us into the evening here. Thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bussie, members of the council. Um, tonight, we're going to go over the public safety answering point and you are right, I just refer to it as a dispatch center. And, uh, we'll cover the service assessment that was done, uh, finished up in late twenty twenty. And, uh, I had kind of a, an opening remarks, if you will, but for the sake of time, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Lorene Draper, who is our civilian service manager, and she will go through the PowerPoint. And then at the end, uh, we could take questions. So Lorene, without further ado, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chief Hartley. Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. Um, I will go through the public safety answering point, your PSAP service assessment overview. Um, and as Chief Hartley said, we'll have an opportunity for questions at the very end. So, uh, the summary of the service assessment, um, the, um, assessment was completed by a consultant, um, firm called PSC Alliance. In October of twenty twenty, um, they're a local company. The city engaged PSC Alliance to perform the service assessment of our PSAP and, uh, we do call it the nine one one center or dispatch center. Uh, the assessment covered staffing and recruitment, training, supervision, operations, workload, budget and technology. Uh, Bloomington operates one of seven independent PSAPs in Hennepin County. Uh, the seven are listed below and the Hennepin County Sheriff's Department in comparison dispatches for fifty-five police and fire agencies in the county. Our PSAP operates within the command structure of the police department. And other than the patrol division, it is the only twenty-four hour public facing unit of city government. Um, the PSAP processes both nine one one and ten-digit phone calls and dispatches for both police and fire. Our dispatchers interact closely with Alina to deliver emergency medical services. And unique to Bloomington is the relationship with the Mall of America's security and dispatch center. Our authorized staffing is thirteen dispatchers and one dispatch supervisor. Uh, today, we currently have eight working dispatchers and two dispatchers in training. Our dispatch supervisor position is currently vacant. Uh, the PSAP is part of the support services division with command level oversight by the civilian services manager. Our PSAP has not been at authorized staffing level since at least twenty fifteen and I believe possibly prior to that as well. Um, as I said, our dispatch server supervisor position has been vacant since May of twenty twenty and oversight has been shared by the training sergeant and the civilian services manager. Assessment findings and call processing. In twenty nineteen, our dispatchers processed over a hundred and seventy thousand telephone calls and more than sixty-nine thousand computer aided dispatch events. In twenty twenty, those numbers were slightly smaller, um, probably due to the COVID impact. And although staffed as a small center based on national comparisons, this activity is more than twice the national average for medium-sized PSAPs with larger staff allocations. And these numbers resulted in an average of about eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-one phone calls and nearly eight thousand CAD events per dispatcher. Calls for service. Two workload measurements, phone calls and CAD events are looked at. More than one hundred and seventy thousand telephone calls in twenty nineteen is a six percent increase over a four-year period. When you break down the calls, about twenty-nine percent are nine one one calls, fifty-eight percent administrative and ten-digit calls, five percent are with the Mall of America Security and six percent Alina EMS. Two key measurements that were looked at, telephone answering time. The consultant estimated from available data that twenty nineteen call answering times ranged from four point five to eight point six seconds. A PSC indicated that our PSAP meets the industry target of ten to twenty seconds. Call processing time is another key measurement and the Bloomington Fire Service Assessment found that call processing time for fire responses was seventy-one seconds longer than recommended by standards. Call volume and workload. With only nine full-time dispatchers during most of twenty nineteen, each dispatcher handled an average of seventy-eight calls per day. While that may not sound like a tremendous load, um, in addition to those phone calls, dispatchers are also interacting with the CAD system. They're handling radio traffic, monitoring video surveillance systems and doing much, much more. Our call volume activity is higher than what is typically found in similarly staffed suburban PSAPs. And interestingly enough, the Bloomington call volume is roughly thirty-three percent And interestingly enough, the Bloomington call volume is roughly 33% of the call volume of Hennepin County dispatch, which serves 55 police and fire agencies. This chart shows how our PSAP compares nationally to other PSAPs. Our staffing fits between the small and medium categories. And some of the characteristics of small and medium PSAPs as compared to Bloomington below, you can see that while our staffing is only 13 compared to a medium PSAP of 27, our call volume is about twice in phone calls, and our CAD events are about two and a half times that of a medium PSAP. And we are 100% consistently below authorized FTE. Our staffing level is described as a crisis, and it's becoming increasingly difficult to recruit and retain dispatchers. Our vacancies are attributed to a number of reasons, resignations, retirements, medical leaves, and long lead times in recruiting and training new hires. Through collaboration with PD Management, HR began using a continuously open recruitment window rather than starting up numerous periodic windows as we needed staff. Our hiring process involves a number of steps. Testing, first-round interviews, a sit-along and dispatch. It gives candidates an opportunity to see what our dispatchers see, hear what our dispatchers hear, and maybe make a decision about whether or not the job is for them. It also gives the dispatchers an opportunity to meet and get to know some of our candidates. A chief's interview is the next step, followed by a background investigation and psychological and physical examinations. During one recruitment process in 2019, there were 30, more than 3,500 hits on the posted position with 208 applications received. However, approximately 50% of candidates are filtered out at each step of the application and selection process. And PSC's review found the recruitment process to be comprehensive and structured to produce candidates with the highest chance for success. Our labor agreement was something that was brought up in the assessment because the contract at the time of the assessment made no provision for lateral entry. It also found that our wage rates are competitive with other metro-area PSAPs. Our structured training program is based upon the APCO or Association of Public Safety Communications Officials model. It includes classroom training on our CAD system and then phased on-the-job training with the Explain, Demonstrate, and Perform model. It's generally a 16-week program, but it can be scaled according to the needs and skill level of the trainee. Supervision, direct oversight is provided by the dispatch supervisor. The assessment determined that the span of control is appropriate. The dispatch supervisor reports to the civilian services manager, and the supervisor does periodically assist with call processing and dispatch duties when needed, but typically does not fill an entire shift. So typical of other PSAPs, about 84% of the overall operating budget is taken up by projected staff wages and benefits. PSC found that our training budget or continuing education budget is insufficient for a PSAP of this size. I do address that later. Persistent staff shortages have had a significant impact on the overtime budget. Based on a payroll cycle provided to PSC, they found, assuming an 80-hour payroll, that the lowest accumulated payroll cycle was 89 hours for one employee. However, many experienced dispatchers routinely accumulated 100 to 150 hours during payroll periods. Two different payroll cycles showed one dispatcher working 238 hours and another 250. So pretty staggering numbers. The recurring overtime is unsustainable and exposes the city to risk. PSC did administer some web-hosted surveys intended for dispatch, police, fire, and support services. 78 responses were received. Many comments focused on the beneficial relationships between the PSAP, mall, police and fire personnel, citizens, and the personalized service provided to businesses and visitors. 85% of police officer responses strongly agreed that the dispatch customer service skills affected the success of their work. Interviews with Mall of America's security management show that they strongly believe that the work between officers, mall security, and the Bloomington PSAP is an important symbiotic relationship. Interactive communication and consistent information sharing between MOA dispatch and our PSAP are fundamental in day-to-day operations. The PSAP's ability to view MOA closed-circuit TVs is used constantly and with effective results. Recommendations, action items, and next steps. Recommendations for bell curve or balloon staffing or over-hiring in order to accommodate our fluctuating staffing levels is a recommendation by PSC. Develop lateral recruitment and hiring strategies. Engage our service recipients, EMS and fire. Establish a QA program. Reinforce our trainers' responsibility for trainee success. And implement automated fire alerting. Examine opportunities for telework. One of the items that PSC noted in their assessment is the impact of the pandemic on PSAPs. And it was brought forth that telework may be something that cities and PSAPs around the country may want to investigate. What have we accomplished so far? Language in the 2020 labor agreement now allows the city to start experience new hires at step two or three. We've also formed a police-fire dispatch user group that meets monthly to discuss operational concerns, answer questions, and collaborate. We've implemented an automated fire alerting system that should make a tremendous difference in our call delivery time that was noted earlier in the assessment. And as of today, the actual voice dispatch piece of that went into place. We implemented a policy change to allow for a more even distribution of overtime. And we've held Train the Trainer class and have done ongoing coaching facilitated by the training sergeant. Additional continuing education funds are also available for dispatchers in the police department training budget, which is one reason why we didn't allocate more funds in the previous budget. Our next steps are to receive input from city leaders. We'd like to continue to partner with HR and recruitment and retention strategies. We are in the process of completing the hiring of a new dispatch supervisor. We will form a micro-business to research and select a QA/HI processor program involving the relevant stakeholders. And we'll also look at forming a micro-business to research the feasibility of telework. PSC commented that because of its call load, the demographics of the Bloomington community, and the unique services provided by the PSAP staff, PSC concludes it is unlikely that PSAP services could be outsourced without compromising existing Bloomington delivery norms and practices. Now time for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Draper, appreciate it. Just a quick question just for me to kick off. Are the recruitment and retention issues unique to Bloomington? I mean, I seem to recall hearing that there are issues across the system, across the world in terms of this type of system, is that true?
Yes, Mayor Bussie, it is true, it is a, it's a national crisis that was also noted by PSC Alliance. And we know that many of our neighboring PSAPs, including Hennepin County and the Dakota County Communication Center, the Minneapolis Emergency Communication Center, they all are suffering with staffing shortages. I think that there are a number of reasons why. One, it is becoming an increasingly technological position. So you need a high level of technical skill, but you also need a certain blend of certain characteristics and a skill set that are really difficult to find. And you pair that with the demands of shift work and having little control over your schedule and the fact that our public can be really hard on dispatchers. You know, they're not having a good day when they're calling, and often their fear and their anger and their confusion may be taken out on dispatchers. Those stressors add up, and that's before we've even gotten to the point where the dispatchers are dealing with the stressful calls. They're the first first responders for our agency, and so they are the first ones exposed to every call that goes out to our police, fire, and EMS partners.
Thank you, thanks for that background, that's helpful. Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you very much. I guess, kind of to the mayor's point here, while a lot of these findings are pretty troubling, that's even more troubling to hear that that's just kind of the state of operations like this. I guess I'm glad we maintained funding for that open dispatcher position. I'm wondering, as we move towards kind of that bell curve of staffing levels, are we anticipating needing to add additional positions on top of that? At one point, you referred to it as overstaffed, or is that going to be, once we have the supervisor in, that gives us more flexibility?
So I think looking at the number of calls, our call volume, not just phone calls, but our calls for service and how they compare nationally to a medium-sized center, I do believe that even our authorized staffing level of 13 falls short. We've just been struggling to get to 13. And so, you know, operating with fewer than that is a strain on our team, so.
Thank you, I'll look forward to more conversation on how we get to where we need to be.
Councilmember Lohman?
Oh, thank you. My favorite topic, call centers, it's what I do all day. So what I wanted to ask is, I saw your last slide there with the recommendation in terms of, or the non-recommendation for the outsourcing due to the delivery of norms and practices within the Bloomington. I fully understand that and support that piece of it. But the question that I had in my mind was when we look at those different, if you will, skill types, you mentioned the Mall of America, being the types of phone calls and that type of thing. Did we look at any of those in terms of thinking that on a temporary basis that someone could handle some of that and not compromise those pieces? Or absolutely no, it just isn't really a good fit for any of those different types of calls that we've got coming in? It would make sense to try to do that to kind of help from, you know, we talk about in the call center, the occupancy level of our staff.
So let me see if I understand your question. Are you wondering if we could pull other people in to do pieces of the job?
Yeah, it would take certain types of those skills. Now, the understanding, you know, in the non-recommendation, that there's a compromise with the delivery norms and practices, and those are at a high standard in Bloomington. But if we were to go down that, you know, on a temporary basis, take a little pressure off of the staff load here, was that something that was looked at? And I know that sort of fits into that outsourcing category, so. It's kind of, you know, a backwards way of asking the same question, but I wanted to just ask it that way.
Okay, Councilmember Lohman, thank you. I'm not sure that PSC looked into maybe outsourcing pieces of our operation. One of the reasons that the, it's so important that our dispatchers are doing things like monitoring the Mall of America cameras and having that close interaction with them is because they can give real-time information to our responders. So they're able to look at, and this is a very unique relationship. I'm not sure that another PSAP would be able to have access to the cameras that we are allowed to through the mall. And so we are, our dispatchers are able to see what's going on, monitor and see what the dispatch center at the mall is monitoring and seeing, and they can give that real-time information to our officers by radio. They can give descriptions, they can give directions of travel, and they can, you know, provide a picture to our responders before they even get there of what they're going to be dealing with.
Well, that makes sense, you know, and that's the only question I really had, you know, in terms of that part that is that in terms of, on a temporary basis, maybe it's not the mall, maybe it's some other piece of it. If that might be something we may want to go back and look and see. Because, you know, I've noticed that before in other contact centers, when the occupancy level, you know, the amount of workload that folks have is at such a high level. I know Councilmember Nelson mentioned, you know, the amount of hours someone had worked on in that short period of time really was quite high, that can lead to burnout, I mean, as we know. So I just wonder if we might want to go back and have another look at that, you know, in terms of see if there's something we could do, again, on just a temporary. But I understand that that will most likely compromise, and we may not want to do that. You know, this is about the safety of our residents, so I wanted to, but I just want to throw that out there just to see. And then, you know, you had mentioned in terms of the number of staff in terms of trying to get that number. I looked at that grid, and do we have an idea of what that number would be? If, you know, if there was no financial constraints at all, and we could just hire anybody that we wanted? You know, do you have a back-of-envelope kind of number that?
Well, thank you, I admit that I didn't go quite that far. I think that with the call volume, we sit somewhere between a medium-sized PSAP and a large PSAP. Bloomington isn't, it's not a sleepy suburb, we have a lot of activity going on here in the public safety realm. And so I think we would have to take a look closely at what PSC Alliance put together in terms of a staffing matrix and do a deep dive into that. There are some details in the final report that's included in the packet that PSC put together, and it looks a little confusing, but I think once we distill that a little bit further, we can come up with a better answer for you.
Yeah, not a problem, those are always tricky and they're different. You know, and I wonder even as I look at the model, when we do the comparison between different cities, that if, you know, when you look at our city as bringing in so much hospitality and so many folks, if that is a more appropriate view as to try to consider that as a part of our population and then scale it that way, that's really what I wanted to get to with that piece, is to add that other aspect, because we have so many folks coming into our city from outside, and they may be utilizing those resources that we have there with our particular services. So I probably could keep going on and on with questions, but I want to thank you. This is very interesting stuff, and I look forward to continuing the dialogue on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lohman.
Council, additional questions? I'm not seeing any. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Beloga, thanks for speaking up, Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. Good evening. I just want to verify, on page 12, it says that we have five console positions. And then if we go to page 15, it says that using the minimum staff objectives, it suggests that we should have 10 frontline dispatchers. So are we really operating at 50% capacity?
Well, as of right now, we have only eight out of 13, so we are slightly more than 50% if you're using our current FTE numbers. We do have.
I'm just focused on this one segment. You know, which are, the terms that they use vary slightly, so I just want to ensure that I'm interpreting it correctly.
Okay.
Because again, at one time, they call it console operators, and the next time, they call it frontline dispatchers.
Those are one in the same.
They are.
Yes.
Again, the, as I'm reading the PSC report, and again, I'll refer to page 15, it says, it suggests we should have a minimum of 10 frontline dispatchers. And then when I go to console positions on page 12, it says five. Now, is that the number of people that we actually have employed as console positions today? Or is that the authorized level for console positions?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. The console positions are the actual workstations that our dispatchers are using. So that is, um, we, we have five fully functioning, uh, workstations. So we could accommodate up to five dispatchers at one time. We have a sixth work, workstation that is only partially, partially functional because it's used for training.
Okay. So this is talking about equipment, not people.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. I was confused because of the vast differences. Appreciate the understanding. Thank you.
Counsel, anything further? Councilmember Lohman, another bite of the apple?
Yeah, I figured if no one's, no one's taking it, uh, so let's dive into the, uh, into the fire, uh, dispatch piece. I'm just curious to hear from your perspective, what do you think the, the resolution is, is with that? You know, certainly there, there's, there's statements in, in the, in the report, but I just want to hear you, you kind of talk about, talk about what you think would be the, the solution to trying to reduce that, uh, that, that timeframe, um, and, and creating even more safer environment.
Absolutely. Uh, Councilmember Lohman, uh, let me first say that, um, the solution is already in place. And we believe that that it's, it's fairly new, but we believe that that will improve that number tremendously. Uh, some of the reasons behind the, the long, um, call delivery time that was noted in the fire assessment and also in PSDs, um, really are attributed in part to the way the CAD system works, our computer aided dispatch system. So when a dispatcher is creating a call, discovers, um, you know, in the course of taking a call, that it's going to be a call that requires a police and fire response, uh, maybe a structured fire, um, uh, maybe something lesser. Uh, they generate a call for service, but it, it generates the police call for service first in the computer. And that gets, uh, sent out and then they have to go back into, um, a fire piece of the, of the CAD system and, uh, dispatch that. What we've done, um, and that is that generates some lag time, um, in part because at the same time that they're doing that, they're also on the phone with the caller, trying to get as much information about the call as they can. And what the automated, um, system has now doing for those dispatchers is the minute they enter an address into the, um, you know, into the, what we call an ACT, uh, a line with the, you know, of the software, then it automatically will recommend fire units and it will tone out the fire station so that they can get rolling. Any additional information then that the dispatcher gets on the phone from the caller, they can put out and enter into the computer, um, as follow up. But at least the units are rolling. And so we haven't, um, had it in place long enough to have, um, really solid numbers. But we are really excited to see, uh, and I'm sure fire department is very excited also to see how, um, how we improve.
Thank you. That, that's a complex, uh, thing that you, you just said, Gary. And if you stop and think about it, but yeah, I mean, but that, I mean, definitely is, is a solution to that problem. But, but thank you. I know we've got a lot on the agenda, so I'll, I'll stop there. But you know, certainly this is one of my passions. So.
So one just curiosity question, as I look at the list of the seven independent PSAPs in Hennepin County, they're, they're pretty much all our neighbors. It's right in, in our neighborhood here. And then the 55, uh, other agencies or, you know, cities, police, fire, that kind of thing. And not necessarily all small cities. We're talking Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, Minnetaka, uh, Maple Grove. I mean, a lot of cities in Hennepin County that are sizable, but rely on Hennepin County. What, um, just again, a curiosity question, what, what prompted the cities in our neighborhood to establish their own PSAPs? While the others just, uh, took the service from Hennepin County?
That's an excellent question. Um, before I came to Bloomington, I worked for 20 years for the Adina Police Department. Uh, 17 of those years were as a dispatcher and a dispatch supervisor. And, um, Adinas, um, their, their reason for staying, um, in the PSAP world and maintaining their own PSAP is the level of service that they wanted to provide to their citizens and to their responders. They operated their own and still do operate their own ambulance, um, department. And so they, um, they wanted to be sure that the, um, citizens were receiving the highest level of service possible. And I believe that that's probably true for the other agencies. Um, the airport is a unique animal and so I don't believe that it would probably be very effective for them to, um, have another agency dispatch for them. Um, but the other suburbs, um, are, are really appreciative of being able to have their PSAP customize their services to, um, not only the citizens, but to the responders. Now that's not to say that Hennepin County or any other, um, consolidated dispatch centers providing bad service. That's not true. But we have the ability when we're independent to be able to, um, respond, um, more, I think more accurately. We know our dispatchers know our agency and our area. They know the responders. They know the geography and, um, they have the ability, I think, to, um, to then maybe increase, um, the sense of safety that the citizens feel. Uh, they know that they're speaking to someone in their own city. They are able to have, um, more of a face to face relationship with the responders. And, um, I feel like they can provide a better level, level of customer service. Uh, some of the agencies, um, that, and I can't speak for all of them that have gone to the county model. Are, it, it's not that they don't want to provide, um, a level of customer, of customer service or the same level of service. But they have lost the ability to, um, to customize. And so when you are dispatching for 55 agencies, you have to really do things just one way. You can't dispatch, um, this way for, you know, um, Minnetaka and dispatch that, that way for Hopkins. You have to keep it consistent. They don't get as much detail. Their dispatchers aren't able to do a lot of the things that our dispatchers do behind the scenes. Um, some other research or, um, looking up, uh, call histories, sending photos out to the field. That's just not possible when you're dispatching for 55 agencies.
Sure. That makes sense. Um, and actually Mr. Brugge and I were texting back and forth. I, when I was at the University of Minnesota, they did their own dispatching there. Have they been rolled into Minneapolis or Hennepin County now, or do they still do their own?
No, uh, I forgot about them. They do still maintain their own independent PSAP.
And if I remember, they're facing some of the same challenges as everybody else. So. Counsel, any additional questions? If not, uh, as I said, this was a, an information item for us. And, uh, we'll look forward, I'm, I'm assuming as we have with our other service assessments will be updated as we move along. As you work your way through your next steps and we'll be talking about them, uh, either through update or if there's decision points for the, um, for the council. We'll, you'll be back in front of us and we'll be talking about them then.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mayor Bussie and counsel.
Ms. Grayburn, Chief Hartley, thank you very much for being with us this evening. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you.
With that, uh, Ms. Wilson, if you could, uh, I, I think we are done with public comment for the evening. If you could release our, our phone service, uh, we might be a bit late in doing that and I apologize for that, but, uh, I forgot. So if we could release our phone service now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Leah, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
We are all done with public comment tonight. So thank you for your assistance and you can go ahead and disconnect the service.
You're most welcome. You have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you for your help this evening. We can now move to item 8.3 on our agenda, which is a facilities maintenance service organizational assessment scoping along the same lines as what we've just been talking about. Uh, we've been asking different departments within the city to do a service assessment. And, uh, this, uh, we're to our facilities maintenance department. Let's see here. Who is, Mr. Keel, are you taking this one on for us or Mr. Bradford?
Um, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bradford, good evening. Welcome. Thanks for sticking it out with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Baron counsel, uh, following the, uh, the results of a service assessment, I'm presenting our next service assessment, which is the fleet maintenance service assessment. I think the most important part of this is to make it really clear that this is not an assessment of our actual facilities. It's an assessment of how we deliver services to the people in those buildings. And how do we go about the business of maintaining those buildings? Uh, the primary scope of this review is to look at the organization of our service delivery, our structure and the policies around it. We want to analyze our workflow patterns, longevity of our facilities, how we do our strategic planning and the productivity of our facility staff. Uh, part of that is evaluating the organizational structure, making recommendations about improving service and efficiency. We want to take a strong look at how we deliver our preventive maintenance program. So we can extend the life cycle of our buildings to their maximum. And one of the real critical elements is developing performance measures that, uh, are based on industry standards so that we can measure how well we're doing relative to, uh, similar other, uh, uh, communities. We also want the consultant to look at our staffing. Do we have too much staff? Do we have too little staff? What are the, uh, uh, the metrics that would help us identify what we need to do to deliver the best services for the community? Another piece of it is to analyze our facilities management information system. So we have a computerized system that helps us run our buildings, identify problems. Uh, taking a look at that and seeing if there are things that we can do better in that area and more, uh, effectively. We can have vendor management, how we communicate with the public, staff members and other folks who utilize our buildings. And again, uh, capital investment and also are we providing enough staff development for our team? So that's the, uh, the three minute run through of what the study does. Uh, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I see Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Mr. Bradford. I guess my, my one question is, um, given the circumstances that we are in with the pandemic, does it make sense to wait to do this service assessment until things get a little bit back to normal? And we're, we have a little bit more of normal operations? I mean, what do you see as the impact on kind of outcomes?
Well, so what I see as the major outcomes, uh, that I'm looking for, there is a, uh, a dynamic that's happening in facilities management that is going towards, uh, predictive maintenance. So based on the information that you can get from a whole host of sensors that you're putting on equipment, you can actually do $5 worth of maintenance on a fan or a blower that you wouldn't even noticed in your normal preventive maintenance things. And, and finding the direction to get to that level of professionalism in, in how we do our work. And, and what resources do we need to do in order to advance along that path? And that's probably a five to 10 year path to get to that, to get to that point. The, uh, uh, I think that doing it during the pandemic isn't any better or worse than doing it later. To be quite honest, it, things change every, every year. There's different pressures that impact the staff, that impact the community. And, uh, um, I, I believe that doing this sooner is better than later because it will, uh, help maximize the potential of our staff and, and our facilities.
I think, yeah.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Carter asked, uh, generally the same question I was going to ask. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't so much have a question, just a general comment. And it, it's really a, a theme that I've picked up in, to varying degrees in a, a few of these service assessments that we've done. Um, but I just, I wanted to specifically call out, you know, you, you reference comparing, uh, performance with industry standards and, and all of that. And, um, but I, I'm glad to see that, that there are also, there's going to be work done on developing specific metrics related to customer satisfaction and so on. Because one of the things that I, I sometimes get a little wary about when we do service assessments is, you know, are we only comparing to industry standards or how other cities do it and so on? And, and what are we doing to sort of, you know, this, this ultimately, these are services that serve the city of Bloomington. So what are we doing to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the city of Bloomington? Not just what, you know, industry standards or peer cities or, or whatever it is say. So, um, that, that I just wanted to mention that I'm, I'm glad to see that there is some consideration for that. So thank you.
Counsel, anything additional? Councilmember Beloga, any questions from your end?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No.
Okay, thank you. So as, uh, th- this was a, is an informational item, the RFP, uh, I believe you gave us, did, did you give us the timeline of the RFP, how it's, how this will all play out?
So there's some fine tuning that has to happen to get it in alignment with our new procedures. I would expect that the RFP will go out in March and it will take approximately three to four months to complete the assessment.
Very good. Counsel, any additional questions? Mr. Bradford, I'm, I'm hoping that our remote meetings continue long enough to see progress on your basement. It's, uh.
Well, you know, this, my furnace went out last week, so all, all of the progress is, is hidden mechanical things.
I, I wasn't sure if we caught you in the middle of cleaning it or what, but I, I, you know, I'm waiting to see this, the, the, uh, the studs get covered up and the, uh, the ceiling go in and the whole bit. It's, uh, so we'll, we'll be delaying the, uh, getting back into, getting you back into the council chambers until then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda, counsel, are a series of appointments. Eight point four, all the way to eight point eight are the appointments. And, um, for the folks who are watching at home, these are, these are the, uh, applications we've received for appointment to the, uh, Advisory Board of Health, to our Creative Placement Making Commission, Human Rights Commission, Parks, Arts and Recreation Commission, and our Sustainability Commission. We've got a lot of applicants for just a few openings on all of these very important commissions. First of all, thank you to everybody who applied. I mean, this is fantastic. I, I relayed in the past, I do remember I was on the council and Councilmember Beloga remembers it as well, times when we had to actually go out and, um, and recruit people just to apply to be on our commission. So this is an absolute great problem to have. But it is a problem, I think, because it's, we've got a lot of folks, uh, applying who are very, very talented, very qualified, uh, applying for just a few openings in these commissions. And so counsel, here's what I would like to suggest. Tell me what you're thinking here. Okay? Tell, tell me if you agree with this. We have talked in the past about trying to do a little bit more than simply reading through applications, perhaps resumes, and trying to make an appointment based off of just on the paper. And we've talked about the possibility of beefing up our application process to include interviews. And I would like to suggest or throw out the possibility of, uh, doing that in this case. That we find a way to interview the different applicants for these two, or for these five, uh, uh, these five different boards, commissions that we were trying to fill. Now, just doing the math as I look at it here, we've got, um, the way it breaks down, and I think it, if I'm remembering, it, it breaks down. We, we've got appointments, um, different groups, like I think we have three and three. And then two, two and one, or something along those lines, basically. But what it breaks down to in my mind is we could break this into two groups. And I would recommend perhaps the council breaking down into two groups and taking an opportunity to interview the folks who are applying here and bringing back recommendations for the full council to make a decision on, ultimately on all of this. And, um, it, it would probably, um, with the, with the two groups, it would probably break down into, you know, a couple, three, four hours, perhaps a Saturday morning or something like that, where we'd have the opportunity to do this kind of thing. We could set this up in any way that we would, were comfortable. For example, if there are three appointments to be made that we then interview six people, you know, so we'd, we'd look at it in that way. Or if there's two, we'd interview four. So we just make sure that we're not just, uh, we're not looking at the, the complete, um, universe of people who have applied, but rather a, a narrowed down universe of people that, that have applied and with a relation to the number of appointments that we're actually going to make. And, um, now I, I understand and, and realize that everybody has, you've picked out your top two, your top three, based on you, what you thought we were going to do for voting tonight. And so if we need to actually take another week, delay this by a week, so you can dig in a bit deeper and get down to your top five, as we would need to do something like that to make sure that we could fill the different numbers that we would want to fill, I could understand that. But, um, thoughts on that? Thoughts or, or possibilities? Thoughts on that? Thoughts or or possibilities or? Ideas about how we might want to put this together just to to try and get through this big stack of applications in a in a in effective and an efficient manner? Counsel member, I don't even know who came up first. Councilmember, excuse me, Mr. Verbrugge wants to chime in very quick first. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you tried to give me a promotion there to council member, but I'll reluctantly decline that opportunity. I appreciate the the mayor's suggestions here and maybe council members to. Put more of a process. Into place to think about. What I think might work is if you possibly, we still vote the way that we have. And if everybody votes for the number of openings on each of these commissions, we're probably going to see. A number of candidates above what the openings are. Because I I don't anticipate that council members are going to all be voting for the same people. And so that will probably identify some sort of a natural break, whether it's. A couple more than the openings that exist or twice as many openings, whatever it is. That that maybe if we go through the round of voting and see where that comes out, it'll maybe be able to be more clear. My my suggestion for the interviews is that. You you do try to keep it to a manageable number, but certainly a number that'll give you some choices for recommendations. And like the mayor said, I think that if you have. You know, a plus two for each of the commissions or even double the number of openings. That you can still do probably 15 minute interviews and do that in maybe four hours' time is what we'd be looking at for time commitment. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Merrill. Let turn it back to you.
Thanks for that that input. Appreciate that. Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the city manager actually outlined pretty much the exact process that I was going to suggest. I guess the, you know, I I I do think we should sort of call the herd a little bit here. And I'm, I guess, my only concern, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I think interviews are a good idea. I think, you know, certainly, we want to give folks the opportunity to to have that further dialogue. I'm a little bit wary of. Putting together a process on the fly. I I think if we if we. If we want to do that, we need a set process by which we decide how many people are granted interviews and and that sort of thing. I would say at this point, I'm comfortable proceeding as the city manager outlined, where, you know, we all sort of vote and, you know, maybe. You know, all of the candidates who got more than one vote, interview or something like that, or find some kind of natural numerical break there so that it's not overwhelming. And I I guess the only other question I would have, and I don't feel strongly particularly about. How to proceed, but if, you know, if say, you know, with two openings, for example, on creative placemaking. If two candidates get four votes. Or whatever, you know, for whatever reason, you know, do we do we want to make those appointments this evening or or should we still proceed with? Interviews in in that in a case like that?
Councilmember Loman?
So. One, I just want to point of clarification. So if. So this would probably delay when folks are able to sit in their seats. How are we going to deal with that? Because obviously, this is going to go beyond the first part of of March. Got my first question. My secondary question, I'm assuming that these are going to be. These interviews will be via online, but for those folks. Who maybe don't have access, will we do that via telephone? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the equity piece of this. This on the fly kind of thing here. How are we going to make sure that everyone's kind of treated equally in this process? Because obviously, folks aren't going to come in for that, right? And then the third thing that I would say is, would we consider, as long as we're doing this on the fly. Would we consider including the chairs of each of these commissions to help out with asking questions?
And and all good questions, council member, and I and I think you're right. Yes, this would push it. It wouldn't push it too late. I think we could probably get it done by, you know, the second week of March or so, or mid-March at the latest. Your your point about the equity piece about making sure that everybody had the same opportunities. What I would recommend there, if people were uncomfortable or not able to to connect virtually from from their home. We could easily set up an office here at at City Hall where they could simply come into City Hall here, sit in one of the small. Conference rooms and do the interview from the conference room, basically, and the rest of us be be virtual. I think that's. That that's manageable. I think we can work around that. And I, you know, I I like your idea about the involving the chairs. That's not a not a terrible idea. I'm open to suggestions here, but I do think we've, I I do think, and we've we've talked about this, I want to see a little more robust. Way of interviewing and choosing the folks who sit on our boards and commissions. Ms. Wirs Prasad, what are your thoughts on all of this?
Um, I think, you know, we can make it work however you're most comfortable doing it. You know, we had come in previously and there was kind of a mixed feeling about. Who wanted to try to do interviews and who didn't. Of course, that was before we had 84 applicants, which is great. You know, which certainly I think changed things. I think if we could try to do it as quickly as possible, I'm just looking at like Advisory Board of Health has five openings. You know, which is going to affect their ability to have a quorum at their March meeting. Possibly same thing with parks as well. But they also don't meet till the last week of. Of the last Tuesday of the month, so there might be enough time to get someone in place or those positions filled.
And maybe, Mr. Mayor, council members, the suggestion from Councilmember Coulter that we do this maybe as a hybrid, if there are any. Applicants that emerge from first round of voting with the majority that to address the concerns from Melissa about. Getting commissions. Especially ones that have more openings staffed, maybe there is an opportunity to get some people moving forward now and then still interview others. You know, I, if if council's comfortable, maybe we can at least do the voting on each of the commissions and see where that leaves us and talk a little bit more about that.
Quick, sorry, quick question. Don't, I thought board and commission members served until a successor is appointed, so. I mean, unless, I guess, unless somebody has resigned, that wouldn't necessarily affect forum.
They do, and and that's totally at their choice, right? If they they want to keep coming back until their seat is filled, then that opportunity is available to them. Trying to recall, I think with Advisory Board of Health, we actually do have. We do have two vacancies, two vacancies, I believe, in place already.
So, counsel, what do you, what's the pleasure here? Should we, should we take a crack at voting? Should we? See what we come up with with the first round and and where, if that natural break occurs and then set up a, an interview process based on that? Or do we want to come back next week? Do you want to take more time to to kind of dig in and and figure out, you know, do it another way? Maybe, you know, if pick your top four or whatever and. See where that voting leads us. Councilmember Belogar, I heard you trying to chime in.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I I think it's, you know, sort of a. Nice idea to interview, but what what we have is 84 candidates for 17 positions. So if we want two candidates for each position, that's 34. I believe that, you know, tonight being a classic example, that. Technology is going to incur problems because we don't know the techno technological capabilities of all the candidates. Nor do we know the equipment needs that they have. And. Overall, I'm just really uncomfortable about. Trying to decide this on the fly. You know, more often than not, when we've done that kind of thing, we come back and end up tweaking it more than once. Because we find it to be unsatisfactory. And for this time, particularly during this period of COVID and all the potential issues that we have. I would like to default to the pride and proven method of voting. And seeing if we can't fill the positions in the way that we've done for the last many years. While we undertake two things, one is to determine how we go about future board and commission. Appointments and move forward in a more deliberate way. So those are my thoughts on it. And I think it's kind of bits and pieces of everybody's thoughts as you, you know, sort it out.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if we. Take each commission kind of on a case by case basis and if, and maybe this is what you said, but if there are. Enough people rising to the top in terms of votes, and if there are council members who feel strongly that they'd like to interview. We could just take it on a commission by commission basis. It might be that the the way we've done it works fine, like, maybe that's just going to elevate. Certain number of people for each commission and it'll be fine, or it could just be that we need to do interviews, but. Every commission, each commission might be different. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah, Councilmember Belogar is right. I mean, we've done this for a number of years. I think. I can remember interviewing once over the past four or five years now, and we. Frankly, have appointed good boards and commissions over those four or five years. I think we haven't, we haven't had a clunker. We've done well with it, so it does work, so. Councilmember Coulter, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. I I think what I would like to see, and it feels feels like we have this conversation. Every time we make appointments and it it always starts the night we're set to make appointments. Which I'm beginning to think is not the best time to start this conversation. So what what I would suggest is is, and I'm I'm going to say this now, that we we move forward kind of the way we have in the past. And then let's maybe have someone work on a process for interviewing candidates in the future. So that we don't have this conversation, the next time we have this conversation is not the next time we're making appointments. The other thing I would say is that 84 candidates at 15 minutes a pop, that's only 21 hours straight. So I think we could all probably get through that with a couple pots of coffee.
So do I, do I see nodding improvement, approval of that suggestion? Or do we want to try and piece this together on the fly and think about other ways of doing it?
As I said, I'm good to go with our historical method for this time.
I heard you nodding, council member. I I heard you.
Mayor, I'm open to whatever you you think is best moving forward. But I'm certainly starting to hear your folks. I'd be interested to hear what the other council members who haven't spoken.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, honestly, I can go either way, but I do believe we had a discussion not too long ago and there was. At least a majority of council members that wanted to integrate an interview process into this. You know, frankly, I think the voting on people and then, you know, seeing how many there are and interviewing those. May make sense, but, you know, if people don't want to change the process up here on the fly, I can. Respect that and go with that. I think that we're going to get great people. I think we have. Probably 84 great people that applied to serve the city and I appreciate that and. I think it's just a matter of kind of picking the ones that stand out. So that probably doesn't help. Sorry, Mayor.
Councilmember Martin?
I was just going to say, I I remember the the conversation. Councilmember Nelson is is kind of citing where we had some ABCD options, how we move forward and interviewing was a piece of that. I I'm comfortable kind of playing it by ear tonight. If we run into a deadlock on a commission or two, we can move it to interviews and. Throw it on now, on agenda for the future to lock things in officially.
So if we move forward tonight, can we all agree that it will be, as Councilmember Coulter said, this will be the last time we do it like this? That we have a process in place by this time next year, by the next time we get around to this. That we that we've got a a process in place that we're comfortable with and we agree with. And and maybe it's not interviews, maybe it's a different way of. Trying to learn more about these folks or get to know them a little bit better, but. More than just reading the the names on a paper and the resumes and and applications. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want clarification. Don't we have other appointments, like in the June-July timeframe for like Planning Commission? And would we be able to get it done for that?
Yes, we do. That's a good point, and I think that should be our goal. It's, can we set that as a goal, Mr. Verbrugge?
Yes, we can.
Let's do that. All right, and now the downside of this, of course, with with my great plan that I had. I narrowed it down to like eight as opposed to the two or three that we need, so. Talk slow as we do this. So. We will be then digging into it. And I'm assuming you've all got your packet, the the voting information that Denise sent out. And why don't we start with, if we could, the Advisory Board of Health?
Mayor, can I ask a question on the Advisory Board of Health?
Yes, you may, council member.
Thank you. Are we looking for five or for four people? Because the cover sheet with the packet that we got said four, but the voting thing says there's five.
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Nelson, we do have five vacancies. The cover sheet is back from January and we've we've had an additional opening since that time, so we do have five.
So we do have five, and this is one where it breaks down specifically within the five that we'd need. Two consumers and three providers to to fill the Advisory Board of Health as we as we'd set it up.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Belogar?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor. What I would like to remind all of us is, is that. While a consumer cannot be a provider, a provider can certainly be a consumer.
A good reminder. That is, that is indeed true.
And since I see that I'm to kick off, I'm prepared to offer five candidates.
All right.
And what I will not do at this time. Because I think it's counterproductive until we find out who the successful candidates are. Is is to say consumer provider and the various terms that are available. You know, saying that this person is for a one year, this person is for a two year and so on.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. I just want to make sure. That, well, I I think by default, we're going to end up with enough providers, just because there are. More folks, I think, who identify as providers and and consumers, but you're right. A provider can be a consumer, a consumer cannot necessarily be a provider. All right?
If if the ground rules are understood, I would then go and provide the position number and the last name.
I think that is fair. I I'm, hold on, I'm getting a nod. I want to make sure that. That Ms. Christensen gives me a thumbs up. And why don't we, why don't we do these? As slowly as we need to, to make sure that Denise can get everything done and we we get through the technical glitches that we can do here, so.
Just watch my eyes. I'll look up.
Okay, very good. So our first, our first run at the Advisory Board of Health, Councilmember Belogar, why don't you lead us off?
Good. Number six, Lori. Number seven, Manahani. Number 10, Schulter Eichen. Number 13, Seaward. Number 14, I'm going to default to Bedford. Number 14, I'm going to default to Bedford. I will not try to pronounce the first part of the last name.
Ms. Christensen, you ready? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. So I will go with one Bustamante Ortega. Seven, Monah, Monahani. Nine, Sage. Thirteen, Seaword. And fourteen, Swinigand Bedford. Did you get them all, Denise?
All right. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I will go with five, Johnson. Seven, Monahani. Nine, Sage. Ten, Schulter Eichen. And fourteen, Swinigand Bedford.
Councilmember Lohman?
I'll go with number six. Lori. Number seven, Monahani. Uh, let's see here, number... Number nine. Sage. Ten. Schluter. And number 13, uh, Seaword.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go first with number six, Lori. Number seven, Monahani. Number nine, Sage. Number 13, Seaword. And number 14, Bedford.
Councilmember Nelson?
All right. Number one, Bustamante Ortega. Number six, Laria. Number seven, Monahani. Uh, number 12, Shepherd. Number 13, Seaword.
Very good. And I will go with number one, Bustamante Ortega. Number five, Johnson. Number seven, Monahani. Number 10, Schluter Eichen. And number 14, Swinigand Bedford. So Denise, what do you got for a count?
If my counts aren't mistaken, Mayor, it looks like we have seven for Monahani. Four for Sage. Four for Schluter Eichen. Five for Seaword and five for Swinigand Bedford. And the rest are three or less votes. So we do have five positions with majority.
I count four for Loria.
I also had four for Loria.
As did I.
As do I.
I'm so glad I have so many people who do this with me.
So, Mr. Mayor, it appears you have six with the majority for the five seats. And you have two of those, or three of those six that have four votes each.
So what, I think it would be safe that we could put Monahani in with all seven votes. I think that's a safe assumption. And our other two with five votes, are we comfortable moving those forward as well? And then the question would be with our three with four votes. Do we want to go back and vote with just those three and you would have opportunity to pick two? That make sense?
Mr. Mayor, I certainly concur with that.
So why don't we, why don't we move forward to another round here and eliminate all but number six, Loria. Number nine, Sage. And number 10, Schluter Eichen. And start the voting again. And you get to vote for two of those three. And from there, we should be able to come up with, I would think, two, two folks who would move forward. Fair?
The names one more time. Just want to make sure I have it right.
Would be number six, Loria. Number nine, Sage. And number 10, Schluter Eichen. All right. So as we go to the second round, Councilmember Carter, you get to lead us off in this one.
All right. I am going to go with Loria and Sage.
Councilmember Coulter?
Uh, nine, Sage. Ten, Schluter Eichen.
Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, put me down for a ditto on that one, Christine. So I'll do both, nine and 10.
Who's Christine?
Boy, it's getting late for me.
I guess. So Councilmember Lohman goes for Sage, number nine, and 10, Schluter Eichen. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, don't let me shade it, are you?
Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I, I don't have any write-in votes. I'm going to stick to what's here. I will start with number six, Loria, and number nine, Sage.
Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, six, Loria, and nine, Sage.
Councilmember Baloga?
Uh, number six, Loria. And number nine, uh, number 10, excuse me, Schluter Eichen.
And I will go with number six, Loria. And number nine, Sage. Denise, if my math is correct, tell me if mine matches yours. That gives us six votes for number nine, Star Sage. And five votes for number six, Chris Ann Loria.
That is what I have as well.
Counsel, I would now ask for your help in breaking this down for consumer provider. It looks like, I believe, all of our choices are officially providers. So then it's a matter of, it's just a matter of the year terms, I believe. And I would, I would recommend at least one of the three-year terms goes to Monahani, who had seven votes. Another of the three-year terms goes to one of our five vote-getters. And we break it down and that way just work our way back. How about that? Anybody want to take a crack at a motion here?
Mr. Mayor, I will, I will do that.
Please, Councilmember.
I will nominate the following for the following positions. Uh, Monahani, uh, as a consumer for a three-year term. Seaword as provider for a three-year term. Number 14, and I still have not got the pronunciation down. Bedford for a provider two-year term. Sage for the other provider two-year term. And Loria for the consumer one-year term.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to make appointments to the Advisory Board of Health as stated. Counsel, do we have additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
So congratulations to our new members of the Advisory Board of Health. Next up, let's go do creative placemaking if we could, please. Creative placemaking appointments. We have two openings. 14 applications received. And we would then need everybody to vote for two. Everybody ready to go? All right. Councilmember Coulter, you get to lead us off this time. Oh, and, and we have a total of two and only one could be a, a non-resident. We can only appoint one non-resident, but it is possible to appoint a non-resident. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I will vote for number 10, Autumn. And number 12, Satterstrom.
Councilmember Lohman?
I'll go with number two, Anderson. And number 12, Satterstrom.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, Mayor, I'll vote number 14, Schumacher, and number 12, Satterstrom.
Councilmember Nelson?
Two, Anderson. And 14, Schumacher.
Councilmember Baloga? Councilmember Baloga, you still with us?
I'm sorry, I, I was still on mute.
No, you had me worried there for a minute. Councilmember Baloga?
Thank you. Number three, Barto. And number 14, Schumacher.
Councilmember Coulter?
You mean Carter?
Oh, excuse me. I saw the C. Councilmember Carter?
Um, number two, Anderson, and number 14, Schumacher.
And I had number two, Anderson. And number 14, Satterstrom. Or excuse me, number 12, Satterstrom. So with this, it looks as though we have four, three people with four votes. And none of them non-residents. So that doesn't come into play. So we have three people with four votes. And as we did last time, I think what we could do in a second round of voting here is to narrow it down now to number two, Jessica Anderson. Number 12, Cheryl Satterstrom. And number 14, Jamie Schumacher. Counsel gets the second round of votes. You can only vote for two of those three.
I'll go ahead and get it started then.
Councilmember Lohman?
Number two, Anderson. And number 12, Satterstrom.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, Mayor, I'll go number 12, Satterstrom, and number 14, Schumacher.
Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, two, Anderson, 14, Schumacher.
Councilmember Baloga?
Just catching up here. Two, Anderson. And 14, Schumacher.
Councilmember Carter?
Two, Anderson, 14, Schumacher.
Councilmember Coulter?
Uh, 12, Satterstrom. And 14, Schumacher.
I will go with two, Anderson. And 14, Schumacher. So it looks we have two of the three did, did a majority. Schumacher with six votes. And Jessica Anderson with five votes. Both of these are three-year terms. Counsel, I'd look for a motion. We're bumping up against our 11 o'clock timeframe game.
Mayor, I will move to Jessica Anderson and Jamie Schumacher to the Creative Placemaking Commission.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Lohman to make the appointments to the Creative Placemaking Commission as stated. Hearing no further discussions? Uh, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
We will now move on, if we could, to the Human Rights Commission. Total of three seats to fill. Two of these will be a three-year term and one will be a one-year term. And... Second, to where I was going. Councilmember Martin, you are going to be leading us off here. Councilmember Martin?
Yes, and, and if I may, Mayor, just as a heads up for folks, I have a close working relationship with one of the candidates that's in the pool right now. They're my volunteer director for my reelection campaign. So I'm, I'm going to abstain on this one. If we go to a future round and they're not included, I'll, I'll take it up then.
Thank you for the reminder on that. Thank you. So we will go with, let's start with Councilmember Nelson then. And we'll see how the, the votes shake out with six of us voting on this. Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, four, Funches, eight, Maddox, and 16, Weirzma.
Councilmember Baloga?
Uh, number six, Camison. Number nine, McKinley. And number 12, Santana.
Councilmember Carter?
Sorry, I am embarrassed. Which one are we on?
We are on human rights.
Okay. I have too many papers in front of me. Okay. So I am going with Funches, Santana, and Talander.
So number four, Funches. Number 12, Santana. And number 14, T- Tlander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
You guys skip over, uh, Coulter?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Coulter. Look, I, it's getting late for me, too. I apologize.
I got the vote twice last time. It's fine.
I can go by, uh, Coulter's name, though.
It's the American way.
I will go with number four, Funches, uh, number twelve, Santana, and number sixteen, Weirzma.
Now, Councilmember Loman?
All right, let's see here. I'm gonna go with number, uh, six, uh, Casmians, and then, uh, number twelve, Santana, number fourteen, Tlander.
And my votes are for number four, Funches, for number, where am I here? Number six, Camison, and number twelve, Santana. So if I'm doing the math right, we have two candidates that got a majority. Uh, number twelve, Claudia Santana with five votes, and number four, Darren Funches with four votes. And, um, we had one with three votes, and then a couple others with two votes. So if people are comfortable moving forward with Santana and Funches, then what I might recommend would be, uh, our, our three candidates who received more than one vote, number six, Camison, number fourteen, Tlander, and number sixteen, Weirzma, move them into a second round, and, uh, of the three, you get to vote for one.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
Since we only had, since we only had six people voting, I would say that we appoint Camison, since, uh, she had half of the votes and more than either Tlander or Weirzma. Item for discussion.
Counsel, would we be okay with that? We had, uh, somebody with, with six people voting, we had a candidate with three votes. Or would you rather go to a second round?
Mayor, if I may, I, I guess I would rather go to a second round. Since at least, because I think Tal- Talander had two, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather, I guess, just do a second round.
I, I generally would be more comfortable just, sorry, I didn't, um, just sticking with the, the precedent of somebody having to get a majority vote, not just fifty percent, but a majority.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
The risk is, uh, the risk is, is that, uh, with six people voting and three candidates, we can end up with, uh, uh, on more additional rounds and still not come to a conclusion.
Let me ask this. Uh, Councilmember Martin has, uh, your, your direct contact here. Uh, did they make the, this round?
Uh, I apologize to continue throwing in a monkey wrench, but they did make it through.
God darn it, okay. All right. Well, I think, I, I would agree with, uh, Councilmember Coulter. I think the precedent being set that we're, we're looking for a, uh, we're looking for a majority. If we need to go to a third round, if we need to then come down to two candidates and, and go forward in that way, I think we could do that as easily. John, Dwayne, what are you thinking?
Let's vote.
Go to a second round? All right.
Yeah.
Well, it's one of, well, this, the other, the, the person with three is one of my votes, so I'm fine. Let's stop in here, too, so.
So the, uh, the, the, the three folks who are eligible are, they received more than one vote, so that'd be six, Camison, fourteen, Tlander, and, uh, sixteen, Weirzma. All right? Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, sixteen, Weirzma.
Councilmember Beloga?
Number six, Camison.
Councilmember Carter?
Number fourteen, Talander.
Councilmember Coulter?
Sixteen, Weirzma.
Councilmember Loman?
Oh, number fourteen?
And I will go with number sixteen, Weirzma. So here we're to the point where we've got, uh, two, uh, two candidates received at least more than one vote. So I would propose a, uh, one more round of voting. Looking to Mr., uh, Councilmember Martin to see if we could, is it possible we're going to tie?
And, and I'm sorry, so the two remaining would be fourteen and sixteen?
Correct.
He's still in it.
All right. So then, Counsel, if we could go to one more vote and, uh, see where we stand after that. Could we do that?
Can we just ask Jack who he wants? Assuming nobody changes their vote?
It's possible it could put it to three to three, couldn't it?
Yep.
Well, I, I think, uh, what we need to do is, is, uh, uh, I would feel uncomfortable being the only vote cast to decide. So I would suggest the third round.
Let's go with the third round with, um, numbers fourteen and sixteen. Tlander and Weirzma. And let's start. Let me see who we're starting with. We would start then with Beloga, is that correct? Is that where we're back around to? It's Councilmember Beloga. You get, uh, the first vote here.
Number sixteen, Weirzma.
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, fourteen, Talander.
Councilmember Coulter?
Sixteen, Weirzma.
Councilmember Loman?
State pound, fourteen.
Uh, Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, sixteen, Weirzma.
And I will vote for sixteen, Weirzma, as well. So after the three rounds of voting, I have number four, Derringer Funches, number twelve, Claudia Santana, and number sixteen, Stephanie Weirzma, as the vote getters. Everybody, is that consistent with everybody else's results? Counsel, I'd look for a motion.
Indeed. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would offer, uh, appointments to the HRC for, uh, three-year terms for, um, Derringer Funches and Claudia Santana, and, uh, for Stephanie Weirzma, a one-year term.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the appointments to the HRC as stated. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. Excuse me, uh, seven or six-zero?
So seven, so, uh, Councilmember Martin, you voted?
Yes, I.
So you voted on the appointment as opposed to voting on the specifics, okay. Ms. Manderscheid?
Councilmember...
You're gonna throw a monkey wrench into this all now?
Yeah, sorry. Um, Denise, I don't know that you can count, uh, Councilmember Martin's, uh, vote. If he has a disqualifying intro, um, then I don't know that it changes unless something has changed, um, at the end. I don't know who the person was that you spoke about, but just to note that if you're disqualified, um, for a reason in the beginning, you're going to be disqualified the end of the time.
Yeah, that's reasonable. Thank you very much.
So then, uh, do we need to revote Ms. Manderscheid, or do we just disqualify Councilmember Martin's vote on this?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, since Councilmember Martin was the seconder of the motion, I would suggest that, uh, we ask for a second seconder.
I'll second.
So we had a motion by Councilmember Beloga, and now a new second by Councilmember Carter. And do we need to revote, Melissa, or are we?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Yes, please.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to accept the appointments as stated to the HRC. Ms. Christensen, if we could do this again, please.
Sure, thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six-zero.
All right, if we can move on then to the Park Arts and Recreation Commission, please. And this is one in particular where I think I identified like fourteen people. So why don't we start, uh, council, uh, I think Councilmember Beloga started round three last time, so we're back to Councilmember Carter starting us off. Am I correct there, Denise? I think I am. So let's start with Councilmember Carter.
Hey, I have them written down here, and they may not be in order. I'm gonna try to go in order. Um, number two, Cohen, um, number fifteen, Hoffman, um, A, sorry, not in order, um, A, Perrault, and then, um, and then I'm gonna go with seventeen, Johnson.
Councilmember Coulter?
I will go with A, Perrault, three, Kohler, seven, Fogg, and nineteen, McCoy.
Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, I'll go with, uh, A, six, seven, and eleven. Got it?
Yep, got it. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, Mayor, I'll go with A, uh, fifteen, twenty-one, and a seven.
Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, A, Perrault, Perrault, sorry, um, one, Bergstrom, and, let's see, fifteen, Hoffman, and seventeen, Johnson, Stephanie Johnson.
Councilmember Beloga?
A, Perrault, fourteen, Heston, fifteen, Hoffman, seventeen, Schuer.
So number twenty-one, Schuer?
Excuse me, twenty-one, thank you.
Thank you.
And I was gonna go with, uh, A, Perrault, number one, Bergstrom, number seven, Fogg, and number fifteen, Hoffman. So with our four seats to fill, we have the incumbent, Laura Perrault, with seven votes. We've got number seven, Joy Fogg, with four votes, and number fifteen, Andy Hoffman, with five votes. We then have, uh, Bergstrom, and Stephanie Johnson with two each, and no other candidate with more than one.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
I have that, uh, uh, twenty-one, Schuer, has two votes.
I have that also.
My, my mistake. I apologize. Not sure who I might have missed. Oh, yes, I, yep, you're right, exactly. I think I missed your vote, Jack. My apologies. So we've got, uh, three candidates with two votes, and, uh, three candidates who have received a majority. So if everybody's in agreement, I would say we, uh, we move forward with Perrault, with Fogg, and with fifteen, Hoffman, and then we take a second round vote on number one, Bergstrom, uh, number two, or number seventeen, Johnson, and number twenty-one, Schuer. Everybody good with that? And Nathan, I believe you're leading us off. Councilmember Coulter?
All right, um, just to clarify, uh, getting late for all of us. We are voting for one, correct?
Correct, voting for one.
All right. I will vote for number one, Bergstrom.
Councilmember Loman?
Twenty-one.
Councilmember Martin?
Um, I will also go twenty-one, Schuer.
Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, seventeen.
Councilmember Beloga?
Twenty-one.
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, seventeen, Johnson.
And I will go with twenty-one, Lance Schuer, which gives him four votes. And so, Counsel, I would look for a motion for Perrault, Fogg, Hoffman, and Schuer, broken down into three three-year terms and one two-year term. Anybody want to take that on?
Mayor, I'm happy to take a run at it.
Councilmember Martin?
Um, I will move that we appoint, uh, Laura Perrault, Joy Fogg, and Andy Hoffman to three-year terms on the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, uh, and appoint Lance Schuer, uh, to a, to fill a remaining two-year term on the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission.
Second, Councilmember Loman.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Loman to make appointments to the Park Commission, Parks Arts and Recreation Commission as stated. Further comment by the Counsel? Hearing none, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. Congratulations and welcome to everybody on the park. Welcome back to, um, Laura Perrault.
And our final commission, the Sustainability Commission, where we have three seats to fill, two three-year terms and one two-year term, and we do have one incumbent seeking reemployment. And I believe Councilmember Loman leads us off with this.
Right.
Councilmember Loman?
All right, I'll go with, uh, A, Deanna White, number four, Jen Lynn Ashland, and, uh, number eight, Dave Ricker.
Councilmember Martin?
Mayor, I'll vote, uh, for A, Deanna White, uh, number one, Stephanie Owen, and number eleven, Sarah Thromson.
Councilmember Nelson?
A, White, one, Owen. one Owen, and eleven Thronson.
Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, A White, eight Ricker, and eleven Thronson.
Councilmember Carter.
Um, A White, uh, one Owen, and eleven Thronson.
Councilmember Coulter.
A White, one Owen, eleven Thronson.
And I will vote for A White, one Owen, and eleven Thronson. And with that first round of voting, we have majority winners, uh, on all three seats. We have, uh, Deanna White with seven votes, Sarah Thronson with six votes, and Stephanie Owen with five votes. Counsel?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would offer, uh, to appoint to the Sustainability Commission, uh, Deanna White and Sarah Thronson for three-year terms and Stephanie Owen for a two-year term.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember, uh, Beloga and a second by Councilmember Carter to fill the seats on the Sustainability Commission as stated. No further comments from the Counsel? Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations to our members of the Sustainability Commission and to all the folks who were, uh, appointed this evening. And I want to congratulate and thank everybody who applied, and that was an overwhelming, in a very good way, an overwhelming number of applicants for the openings that we did have. And I will say what I say, uh, all these, each time we make appointments. Um, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry if you're disappointed tonight. If you weren't appointed, I, 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 I am apologizing because we had a lot of good candidates and, and everybody was outstanding and I appreciate it. But even though you weren't appointed tonight, uh, don't stop applying, don't stop being involved. Find a way to, to be involved in your community, if not on a board or commission, uh, in another way, whether it's one of our service organizations or volunteer organizations in some way, please, please, please be involved. We have just so much talent, so many good, good people in this city. And only so many spots on our boards and commissions, but there's plenty of room for you to, to volunteer, to be part of something in the city, so please do follow up on that and do that. Appreciate, appreciate everybody's interest.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Uh, Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, uh, wanna say thank you to everybody who applied. I, I, and I also want to thank our, our team and coed, uh, new, new process here to improve our recruitment and, uh, attraction of people to our advisory boards and commissions. And I think they just did an excellent job and the, the amount of information that the Counsel had to, uh, work with was, uh, far superior to anything that we've done in the past too. So I, I want to acknowledge their work, uh, in hopefully meeting the Counsel's expectation. And, uh, we will add the next, uh, layer to the process when we do those appointments later this year as well.
Thank you for saying that, and I apologize for, for getting to call out the, uh, the, the staff who did outstanding work on that. The, the packets were fantastic. There was as complete of information as what we've ever seen in appointments, so thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. Well done. Well done. Let us move to our final agenda item this evening, item, um, eight point nine, the City Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmembers, in recognition of the time and understanding, a couple Councilmembers, uh, may have some items. I'll, I'll defer until next week.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna say two thank yous very briefly. First, thanking my colleagues, uh, for, you know, your patience with the procedural hurdles caused by my intentions there. Uh, and second, forcing everybody to vote on the same thing four times is on my bucket list, so thank you for helping me achieve a dream tonight.
Counsel, anything else? Councilmember Lohman.
Mayor, I was gonna make some comments about some stuff earlier, but I will say that as well, but I'd be happy to, if there's no one else that has anything else to say, to offer a recommendation, uh, to, to close our meeting.
Last call, Counsel, anything? Hearing none, Councilmember Lohman, a... Um, a motion to adjourn.
So long.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'm not sure who did it. Hearing no more discussion. Councilmember, uh, Ms. Christensen.
I just got promoted too, huh?
You did. Every, handing them out left and right here tonight.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Seven zero, we are adjourned. You're a council member and you're a council member. We're just handing them out left and right. Thank you all very much. Uh, good meeting tonight. Uh, thanks to the staff for pulling everything together. A lot of good discussion. Uh, I hope everybody is doing well and staying healthy and safe and, uh, enjoying this balmy Minnesota weather, so thank you much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night, folks.